Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Monday, April 4th, 2022 Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board. I see we have a quorum, so we are ready to get going. The posted meeting agenda has been reviewed. I don't know of any changes. Jim, do you have any changes? That you're aware of?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you. You've all received Jim's meeting notes. Have you had a chance to review them?
Yes. I move that we accept.
Thank you, Edna. Could I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. You've all had a chance, I hope, to review the March 21st minutes. Thank you, Gretchen, for getting them out again. Any corrections, additions? Hearing none, could I have a second? Thank you, Edna, second please.
Second.
Thank you, Joe and Sean. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the motion carries. I don't have any correspondence. I don't believe, I mean, we will later speak about some submittals. We've had some public comments. That's not the correspondence I'm talking about here. Jim and I do have a couple of announcements, and I'll turn it over to Jim to talk about some things coming up in a couple of future meetings that we want to make you aware of.
Thanks, Emily. So, as everyone knows, there's a lot going on in town right now. We have incredibly busy meetings, every single meeting, every month. And we have a lot of big projects on our plate right now. One of the things that is coming up that we do need to start getting into are seeker reviews for some of those larger projects. And for the type one projects that we have, we actually need to go through and do a detailed review of the type one, I'm sorry, the seeker documents for a type one review. As a result, we have discussed, and we're going to hold based on some coordination with the planning board attorney, and the fact that this will take some time, we are going to go through and do an April, it was April 18th meeting. In place of a lot of the new potential projects that would come in, we're going to actually do a seeker overview for probably 30 to 45 minutes, looking at the part two of the seeker document, what it contains and what is the planning board will need to do, and have a discussion about how that relates, in this case specifically to brass mirror and the Red Wing projects that are before the board currently. So, that will be part one. You know, part one discussion that we will have on the 18th, and spend a good chunk of time at that meeting discussing those. The following month, on May 2nd, we are actually going to spend, what we would be using as time for new projects, to actually go through those part two documents for seeker, and have the planning board go through them line by line, item by item, discussing every part of the part twos, as it relates to each of the projects, again, being Red Wing and Grass Mirror, and then coming to a decision at the end about how each of these projects do or do not meet the secret, the secret classifications and items in those part two documents. So, we do plan on spending a significant amount of time in the April and May meetings on going through these. It's an important part of the review process for these type one projects. And we believe that these two are at the point that we need to go through and do that. There will be others coming. As you know, we have a few other type one projects out there. But those are the two on our plate for right now. Any? Any quick questions about that?
May I ask a question?
Yes, Edna. I just wanted to let Jim finish.
Oh, I thought he'd finished, sorry.
Nope.
Okay, good.
Should we then start earlier on those dates?
I think we've taken it into consideration, Edna, by not scheduling any new applications to try and make up that time. We had the lengthy conversation with John about how long we think these things will take. I think we'll be okay. We can revisit that after the April 18th, which is the seeker overview. And if folks at that time feel you'd like to start a little earlier, we can always bump back that part of the program, program, the committee meeting, because it won't affect the public hearings or their timing. So, I think we can set that aside and revisit it after the 18th. Does that work for you, Edna?
Sure.
Anybody else, anybody else unclear about what we'll be doing? Any questions about seeker, anything at this time?
If, just one question, on the 18th, if we don't complete the review before public hearings, we'll finish it that evening? After public hearings, or you think we'll be able to cover?
Well, we don't, we, I think we're expecting, well, we don't have to start the public hearing specifically at the time posted. We can't start them before it.
Okay.
So, we can take as long as we feel is reasonable in the overview, and then move on to the public hearings. I'm looking at what might be coming up, and, you know, as always, some of these are a moving target. Some choose not to come back, some. So, I really can't tell you at this point how many exactly we'll have in public hearings on the 18th, but it looks like a sizable amount. Hence, the desire to just not keep adding new ones to lengthen out the meeting. So, thanks, Joe, for asking. Anyone else?
I'd just like to say, Melody, it's really important that all the board members try and participate if we can. These are important discussions that will have, you know, important findings, I guess, you'd say, at the end. To make sure everyone can be there to go through these, particularly on May 2nd, when we have to take a vote on the part twos.
Right. I believe we have some guidance documents on seeker that we can get out to everybody, so we'll have a chance to look at that before that.
It's all, I'm sorry, yes, it's all public, and I'll make sure to send the links to that to everyone on the board.
Okay. All right, if there's nothing else, then we can move ahead to new applications. The first up this evening is Michael Gregory, 245 Route 308 Bedroom Edition, or Site Plan Review. Who is here for Mr. Gregory?
Mr. Gregory is here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, let's see, start my video. Okay, here we are. I see myself here. And you can hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good. Okay, so. What would you like from me?
I think we would like you to explain to planning board members what your project's all about, what you hope to do, give us as great a detail as you can.
Okay, well, we're planning on building on the north side of our house a 15 by 15-foot bedroom downstairs. It's gonna be part of a area that is now, that is used. It will be one story. I think we, you had asked for some changes on the plans, which I have submitted. It shows, the new things that I submitted shows a walkway around. You request new pathway, the plantings around. We had a double French door, a 500 French double door that we changed to a single door 36 inches. The addition will, it will actually, it will become a third bedroom for the house. Currently, when we bought the house, we had the septic inspected. It was, I think this was an issue that had come up about the, you know, extra bedroom. We eliminated one of the upstairs bedrooms. It was very small and really sort of unusable as a bedroom. We turned it into a master bedroom clause, thereby making the house a two-bedroom house. This will turn it back into a three-bedroom house. The septic system that went in when we bought the house, or before we bought the house by the previous owner, the condition of the sale was for a three-bedroom house, and that was submitted to Duchess County Environmental Health and approved and installed. So, it's existing and working fine. So, I think you can see in the site, get a pretty good idea of what we're building.
Okay, Jim, do you have any comments?
So, really quickly, and we did talk about this in a pre-con meeting and a couple of the issues. One of them, that the planning board is where, based on my memo, is that the addition does not meet the side yard setback required in the area and bulk regulations, but it is grandfathered. So, that's not an issue for the applicant, even though they don't meet that setback. Otherwise, we really don't see any significant planning issues with the addition to the back of the property. And it will be visible to the neighbor. We believe that Michael has talked to the neighbor, I think. It won't be, it won't be generally visible from the street. Coverage maximums for lot aren't being exceeded despite the fact the lot is not five acres in the RC5. And all those setbacks are being met, when you take into account the grandfathered setback. So, generally speaking, you know, with the addition proposed on the back and of the same kind of design as the rest of the house in terms of the siding and windows, we didn't see any planning issues with it.
Okay, planning board members, questions? Michael?
I have any question for you all? I don't know what the, so, the next stage of this is if you approve it, you'll achieve the building.
Well, what happens next is that we have a draft procedural resolution, which will allow us to accept your application. We will then ask two members of the planning board to make a site visit and report back to us at the next scheduled meeting for your application. So, there's one more step here. Any other questions?
No, that's it. Is that the next meeting, the next?
That would, that would be, Gretchen?
May second.
That would be May second. So, let me, let me make sure that one of my colleagues on the planning board have any questions they'd like to ask.
Yeah, you're all welcome to come over and take a look at it anytime.
Okay. Jim, do you want to put up the draft procedural resolution?
Do that. One second. Okay, so the draft procedure resolution, we will accept the application supporting documents as adequate for further review by the planning board advisors and the public. We're going to classify this action as a type two under seeker, for which coordinated environmental, environmental quality review is precluded. We'll schedule a public hearing for May 2nd at 6:15. And we need to send it to the CAB, HAPAC, because it is a historic property, historic house in Duchess County, and then we need to assign planning board members for a site visit.
Who would like to visit? I'm happy to go. I'll go. Who wants to go with me?
I'll go with you, Melody.
Is that Craig?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And I think that pretty much covers it. It's very hard to hear you, Michael.
Eric, can you hear me?
Yes, a little better.
Okay, I'm not very familiar with the gym calls. So, there's a meeting on May 2nd, and then there's a process that, after that, to review everything.
If, if everything goes well, we'll, we'll schedule, following this meeting, we'll schedule a site visit with you. We'll come back at the May 2nd meeting. We will give a report. If at that time, other planning board members have questions, they will ask them. If not, we will move to an approval resolution. And unless, and of course, there are neighbors that have concerns, they will be publicly noticed about the public hearing coming up. They will have a chance to comment if they so choose, positively or negatively, and barring any unforeseen circumstances, you would most likely leave that meeting with an approval.
Okay, so I should be present for that May 2nd?
It would be, I think you should be.
Of course. Okay, great.
And Gretchen will send you all the information, and we'll be in touch with you to schedule a site visit.
Sounds fine. Thank you so much.
Okay. So, I have delegates who are going, seen the resolution. Could I have a motion to accept the draft procedural resolution? Thank you, Edna, second please. Second, Craig, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. We'll be in touch, Michael.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Have a nice evening.
Okay.
The next new application before us is Rebecca Tadakonda, 310 Enterprise Drive for Pool House Detached Garage and Utility Shed Site Plan and Special Use Permit.
Hi, I'm Wendy Whispering, the architect for the clients.
Hello, Wendy, welcome.
Thank you. Just a small correction, it's Enterprise Road, it's not Enterprise Drive.
Okay, thanks for that correction.
So, we're here tonight because our clients have an existing property with a house and two accessory structures, and we would like to build three additional accessory structures, which will put us in excess of the three that are allowed. And we're also applying for a special use permit for an accessory dwelling unit, because the pool house will eventually be used as a second residence on the property. So, the, the property is about just under 39 acres. And the first accessory dwelling, accessory building is the, the pool house, which is about 3,000 square feet. 1,800 of that is enclosed space, and 1,200 is terrace. And so, the pool is existing. We're just going to be building the, the pool house. The next accessory structure is a detached garage, which is located to the north of the house. And then, the third accessory structure is an existing utility pad that'll be converted into a utility shed. So, all of the utilities are in place already. They would just like to add a roof, because they can see the pad from the upstairs rooms of the, of the existing house. And so, that is, in essence, the scope of the work. We've also included site plans showing the tree implications and proposed planting plans, and a list of plants that will be used. We also have lighting schedule in there showing the lighting and the materials. So, those are the plants. That's the existing site for the proposed pool house. You see the corner of the pool, and there's a small bench to the left and a little fenced area. That's the existing pool equipment, which will be relocated into the building. And the fence that you see beyond, you see the, the double gate beyond there, sort of in the center of the photo. That is the front line of where the pool house will be. So, it's set back behind those trees. And then, there are some trees that you can see in this picture that will be removed, but we're proposing to replace them in kind with additional trees in a slightly different location. So, you can see that's the back. This is the plan of the pool house. So, the office, it's currently, it will be used as an office, but eventually will be used as a bedroom. So, it's a single, it will be a one-bedroom house with a bath. Yeah. Um, the next drawing is the site plan. There's some elevations. So, here's the, yeah, the lighting plan. There's very little exterior lighting. There is some lighting along the front edge of the walkway, and then some downlighting in the underside of the soffit, and just a couple of sconces. So, very minimal outside lighting is proposed. And the materials of the, of the building will be sort of, it's a grayish thermally-treated hemlock cladding. And then, the exposed steel will be painted dark gray color, and there's dry-laid stone walls at the perimeter. And we have a porcelain, a large porcelain tile that's covering the terrace area. Yes. So, there you can see a view of it, of the building. There's the large terrace to the, to the right there. This is the existing location of the proposed garage. So, these existing walls will be retained, and we're just going to build the garage within the enclosure of that. And it'll come out just a couple of feet beyond the stone wall. So, you can see the existing stone walls drawn around that in the plan. And then, you see, this is the proposed view with the building sort of tucked in there. And it has a very low shed roof, because there are a couple of really nice trees right behind the building. So, those will just be limbed up, and they shouldn't be impacted, because we kept the roof quite low back there. And then, I think the last little building. So, this is the existing utility shed, and this is the proposed version. Very simple, also gray cladding. It's open for airflow for the existing equipment that's in there, but it'll be the same materials as the pool house, which is, the existing house is a, is a gray cladding as well. It's a stained cedar, I think. And that's basically it.
Thank you, Wendy. Jim?
Thanks, Melody. So, we took a look at this. I don't think we have any significant planning issues related to the project. I do want to note the applicant is before the ZDA currently for some variances. So, that is going through the process at the moment. I believe, Wendy, you've applied to Duchess County Board of Health to review the septic, and you're waiting to hear from them. Is that correct?
Well, we haven't quite gotten to the approval, but we did meet with our engineer, who's on this call, Mark, tonight, and we will be proceeding with that. So, it is in process. We just haven't reached out to the BOH quite yet. We're almost ready to do that.
Yeah, so, as well as, we really don't have any planning issues with this. We did want to kind of applaud the applicant for the creation of a green roof on the pool house, which is the best practice. We love to see that kind of thing.
Great. Well, the landscape architect is also on the call tonight, John Mark Flack. So, he's responsible for that. I won't take credit.
Other than that, it's a very large site. Everything is set well back onto the property. I don't see any planning issues.
Thank you. Planning board members, questions, comments?
The foundation of the pool house, is that gonna be, is that gonna be, it's not clad in stone like the other buildings are, correct?
No, it's not. So, the, we have this large format porcelain tile. It's like a four-by-four tile. That will be the floor of the terrace, and it's going to wrap down the sides as well. And they'll actually be quite a bit of planting in front of it.
Okay, so it's not going to be visible from below, because I, in another context, I determined that this property is, I think, sits on the highest elevation in the entire Town of Rhinebeck.
Oh, wow. Well, that's nice for them.
It's very close to the, to the border with Mylan, and there's some higher ground around, but it, it's, you know, it's a pretty, I would imagine, a pretty commanding view from there.
It is a beautiful site and a beautiful view, yes, and totally tucked away with no neighbors nearby. So, it's pretty idyllic.
Wendy, is there any way you can add to this, this image, what you expect the landscaping to be?
Um, yes, we could make an attempt at that. There is a landscape plan in here, so we could work on rendering plants is a little bit of a challenge on my end, but we could, we could certainly make an attempt to do that, yes.
We can do that. We can, we could actually render a version of what we're planning. That wouldn't be a problem.
Okay, I think that would help, and it would address, maybe, maybe go toward addressing Craig's question.
Yeah, we're planning thousands of perennials and shrubs and trees. Everything would be native, kind of a stylized native woodland. And all of the foundations would be kind of blurred with all this, these plantings.
And I'll also note that there are, there are several other trees actually between us and where the pool house is. And so, if I drew all the trees in, you wouldn't be able to see the building.
Right.
So, this is a bit of an architectural liberty view of the, of the project.
I see.
Okay, I think, I think, you know, closer we can get to the actual finished look, it would be great, would be great to have as part of the application.
I think the client would like to see it too, so it'll serve two purposes.
Excellent. Anyone else? Okay, we have a draft procedural resolution, Jim?
Do. So, we will, asking the board to accept the application and supporting documents for further review by the planning board advisors and the public, classifying the action as type two under seeker, which coordinated environmental quality review is precluded. We will schedule a public hearing for May 2nd at 6:15. We will send this on to the CAB for review, and also to Duchess County Planning for their review. And we need to assign some planning board members for a site visit.
I will go.
Thank you, Edna. Who would like to go with Edna?
I can go with Edna.
Thank you, Joe. Okay. All right, could I have a motion to accept the draft procedural resolution? Moved by Craig, second?
Second, Delise.
Thank you, Delise. All those in favor? Opposed, extensions, hearing none, the motion carries. Wendy, Edna, and Joe will be in touch with you to schedule a time.
Wonderful. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thanks, you too.
Next, the Rhinebeck Community Nursery School, 34 Brookmead Drive for Playground Site Plan Amendment and Special Use Permit.
Excuse me, Melody?
Yes.
I think I need to sit this one out. My wife teaches in the nursery school, so I'll, can I recuse from this?
Yes, you can.
Okay.
So, let the minutes record that Craig has recused himself. All right, let's move ahead. I think I saw Rebecca here. Rebecca, are you presenting?
Hi, Victoria Polidoro is here. I'm gonna start.
Okay.
So, good evening, Chairwoman and the rest of the board. I'm Victoria Polidoro, an attorney here on behalf of the applicants Rhinebeck Community Nursery School and Brookmead. We're here tonight with Andy Rimpf from La Bella, Rebecca Stotts from Rhinebeck Community Nursery School, and Brian Ziden from Brookmead. The applicants are seeking an amended site plan and special use permit to allow the installation of an outdoor play area. You'll recall that in September, the board granted the applicants the right to have an accessory nursery school use at the site. They're now looking to modify the, the approval, so that the children have a playground closer to the building. They're currently using the soccer fields for play, which is lovely, but they are looking for a closer option where they don't have to cross the road. No expansion of the accessory use itself is proposed. It's just the exterior playground. The playground itself is approximately 3,308 square feet, and they're proposing a four-foot-high fence. It's a type-two action under seeker, and tonight, we're looking for the board to classify the action, refer it to county planning, and schedule a hearing. And I'm now going to turn it over to Andy, so he can walk you through the site plan. Thank you.
Hi, yeah, thank you, Victoria. My name's Andy Rimpf. I'm from La Bella Associates, formerly Chasen. So, if you see Chasen Company's logo on anything, that's why. But, thanks. I was fortunate enough to be involved back, a few years back, when the Brookmead Center was constructed. And this project, since, as Victoria mentioned, the, the community nursery school has, has a leased space within, you know, what was originally the Brookmead Center building. And this particular site area is out adjacent kind of to the side of Brookmead Center, and it's flanked by an older garage structure and an older house structure, kind of on the north and south of, of the page. So, this particular area is basically a banked-off lawn area as a result of the creation of the Brookmead Center. So, it's a predisturbed area that's basically being used for, for lawn. So, what we want to do is create the playground in this space, which, as Victoria said, is can be directly linked to the activities of the indoor facility at the Brookmead Center. So, we have a, a small sidewalk, five feet wide, probably about 70 feet in total length that would bring, that would be designed to be under 5%, just barely under 5%. So, it's accessible for the children to bring you to a playground area, which we've cited in this location because of its proximity to the building, but also it's in a kind of a good nestled location. The playground itself, Victoria mentioned, 3,000 square feet. The total project area is about 23,000 square feet, so a little less than a quarter acre of total site area. The playground components are kind of a mixture of a few different exercise equipments, all targeted for the age of the nursery school. Monkey bars, a climate discovery cage, some outdoor building, small building sets, some kind of kitchen set area, stackable toys, you know, kind of a low, low intensity kind of use, kind of surrounding a couple of the event spaces. So, you see them kind of laid out geometrically. There's a couple of mature trees around there, so we wanted to nestle this in, bring the trees into the, the part of the shade of, of the play area in there, and then the perimeter boundary of the play area. in there. And then the perimeter boundary of the play area would be a four, five eye chain link fence with a, with a top rail and knuckle salvaged, black PVC coated, fence system, but a pretty simple, some residential scale, let's call it, fence system and two gate locations for access to the playground. And outside of that, there's a couple of small storage, you know, bins. They would be like a rubber made system, something that's weatherproof and protected to be able to store, store the toys for that. The, the parking at the edge is existing. So everything in this, you know, area of work is, is an existing lawn space or place, base, or some little raised gardens that are there. The parking that we constructed back in the day has, has just an asphalt edge. So there is an edge up against, you know, a bank of, of grass as it goes up, kind of right to left. You, you're going up in elevation. So the idea was, is we wanted to put some boulders along that edge, some just decent sized rocks and boulders, just as an extra security kind of barrier between the vehicles and, and the children. There's about a 25 foot distance between those, those uses, but just as extra precaution, that's what we're proposing. Is to add some, just natural stone boulders, you know, along that perimeter for protection. So as Victoria said, it's, it's an amended site plan. It's amended special use to basically provide, you know, play area for, for the children that are already participating at the nursery school. And can take any questions that you may have, but, oh, and the surfacing, I didn't mention the surfacing, sorry. The surfacing would have been the engineered wood fiber. So it'd be a natural color, you know, engineered wood fiber mulch, which is essentially mulch, but engineered for the play safety of the children within the actual rectangular play area there.
Thank you. Rebecca, anybody else from your team wish to speak at this time?
Not that I know of. Thank you.
Okay, Jim, I believe you have some comments?
I have a couple of comments. First one, you know, applaud the applicant for putting the boulders in. I think we've kind of preliminarily discussed this last time around and putting that measure safety between the vehicles and the, and the fencing is something that I've been advocating for. I'm glad to see that. There are a couple of issues that I've identified, I think I've identified, you know, and we could probably discuss these further later. The first one is that there are two seven by seven storage sheds shown on the plans. Based on the description, we believe that these are portable sheds. If only one was proposed, it would actually be exempt from several of the items that I'm about to discuss, but since two are proposed, the zoning code actually only allows for a single portable accessory building with a maximum floor area of 80 square feet. And what we have proposed here are two with a total of 98 square feet from, from what I could read. So that requires this, you know, those to be considered again as part of the special use permit, but it is above what is permitted in, in that code to be allowed to be, you know, kind of exempted. Since the parcel is over 10 acres, they are allowed to have more than three accessory roof structures on the property. If a special use permit is granted by the planning board, there are already more than three. We're technically adding two more, even though they are seven by seven, you know, plastic sheds. So again, we're looking at this from the perspective of additional accessory roof structures on the site. Again, just something else for the board to keep in mind as, as we go through our review. What else? Oh, they, in addition to that, since there are several other accessory structures on the site, we need to evaluate whether the total square footage of all of the accessory structures is over 1,500 square feet in floor area. If they are, and we believe they probably are with everything on the site, we might be looking at the need for a variance for floor area of the two sheds. Which is why I bring up the idea of the one shed, that if one was put in there to code, it wouldn't actually require a special use permit review and it would be permitted by right if it was under 80 square feet. Because we have two, it actually may trigger a bunch of other things that then need to be considered as we move forward with the project. So, you know, these notes will be given to the applicant and we can, you know, we can discuss those, you know, with the, interim zoning administrator and others as well as tonight. Additionally, the sheds are unfortunately located closer to the street than the principal building on the site. Any accessory structures that are closer to the street than the principal structure also require potentially a variance. I know, again, these are two seven by seven plastic sheds, but that's the way the code reads to me. So another item I think we would need to discuss. If the sheds were located behind essentially aligned, parallel to the nearest edge of the building that's parallel with the road, and they were behind that line, then that requirement would go away. But where they're proposed, I think there is a potential variance requirement there. Additionally, based on the definition of accessory structure and play structure, I believe that the play structure that's proposed may also require variance because it too is located in front of the principal structure. Again, kind of all falling in line with the same requirements in the code. If that were behind that edge that I had mentioned of, of the building that it's at, I don't believe that that would be necessary since that building would be considered, I think, the principal building for this use. And then finally, the fence that's proposed is a four foot fence, which is good because that is what's required in a front yard. However, there was a discussion of including some fabric material, I believe, on the inside of the fence. So that may make it so that the fence can't provide for the passage of views, which is an issue we have discussed in the past. So that would be another, I believe, special use permit discussion for the board to have. So those are, those are my findings on, you know, what I've found from my preliminary review that I wanted to raise for the board tonight.
Thank you. Chairwoman, may I just address some of those? Cause I think we can cross some off the list. The applicants have a grant which has to be used, so there's a time constraint. And they're happy to remove one of those seven by seven structures and to move the other behind the edge of the building. So we can submit that to you for the next meeting. I wasn't clear on which, which corner you were measuring from, because the front of this building is certainly, you know, I would say over a hundred feet in front of the playground. The front edge, so. Could you just clarify which edge you're using for the playground variance?
The building, the, the playground is in front of the building, right? Between the building and the street?
I mean, I guess it depends on how you measure the front, sure.
The, the, the front, the front is, is 308, right? So it would be aligned, it would be aligned parallel to the, the closest edge of the building, which would be here, which is why being that that, you know, the playground is in front of the building. So you're in the front yard and you're unfortunately in front of the building, what we're proposing. So accessory structures in front of the, and unfortunately, the, a play structure falls into that accessory structures in front of the principal building do require that variance. There are several buildings on this property that potentially could complicate things, but if we assume that this building, any of the buildings really, it's still would require that variance, unfortunately. So for the play structure and the sheds, if the shed gets moved behind the building, I think it would take care of that, but the play structure itself obviously has to be in the fenced area and it's still between the building and the road.
Okay. All right, let me, is that it, Victoria?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Other planning board members, questions?
I have a question about a play structure being considered an accessory structure. I mean, people often put things like slides or whatever next to their house, things that kids play on. I haven't really thought of them as a, an accessory structure. Jim, would you say more about that?
Yep, I can do that. So an express, an accessory structure is defined as a structure or building, the use of which is customarily incidental and subordinate to that of the principal structure or building and which is attached there to or is located on the same lot or premises. Except for an accessory dwelling unit, guest cottage or echo cabin, unit approved under certain parts of the chapter, which this is not, accessory structures are not for the purpose of human habitation and may include such structures or buildings as garages, swimming pools, spas, whirlpools, hot tubs, tennis courts, gardener tool sheds, barns, studios, greenhouses and playhouses and such elements as generators for non emergency use, satellite dish antennas and solar and wind energy systems. So as it's defined in the code, it falls under the definition of accessory structure and any accessory structure in a front yard technically needs a variance.
So is there something here like a little building that you go into? Or I thought these were things that you climb on?
Correct. They're just play elements that you climb on.
I mean, I have a bench in my, in my garden. Is that an accessory structure?
If I could speak up for just a moment?
Yes, please.
Under the definition for accessory structure, play structures such, and among other things, greenhouses, tennis courts, all this stuff, are in the definition of accessory structure in our, in our zoning law. So our zoning law does consider a play structure to be an accessory structure. And play structure is defined as a recreation structure such as a treehouse, playhouse, or prefabricated play equipment located at grade or elevated, but not intended for habitation and without amenities such as electricity or plumbing. If that's any help.
Is there any height requirement on that? Because this, this climbing discover cave is only 40 inches high.
Accessory structures can be no more than 20 feet tall. So I think you're okay there. Unless you have a big treehouse.
Nope. Thank you.
Michael, let me, let me make sure that there are no other questions from the planning board. All right, Michael, I believe you've had some communication with Brookmead that you might want to share as well?
Yes, I did. As the zoning enforcement officer, I did send a notice of apparent violation to Brookmead because the Arts Cafe was being open to service the general public. And there are a couple of problems with that. First of all, a public restaurant is not permitted in the RC5 zoning district. And secondly, the approvals that we gave for the pavilion were for the Brookmead community guests and visitors of, visitors of the, of the residents there. I have received a letter from Brookmead saying that they understand that situation. They're going to cease any attempt to get people outside the Brookmead community coming into the cafe. Although I do believe they are contemplating getting a use variance at some point in the future to permit them to do so. But at the present time, we do have a letter that Brian sent to me saying that they will, they recognize the concern and that they will, you know, make every effort not to be offering service to members, people who are not members of the committee, guests of members of the committee, family members, things like, of the community, I should say, family members and that sort of thing. And they have ceased all outside advertising to the general public. And I believe that that satisfies me as CEO that they have addressed this potential violation.
And that is indeed why this application can move forward at this time.
Correct.
Okay. So we just wanted everybody involved with this project to be aware of that. We sought assurances that the public facing aspects of this pavilion are not continuing at this time while they're considering coming in for a use variance.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Anything else from planning board members?
Do we have, or are we going to get an illustration of what the fence is going to look like?
I had requested that in my memo, Edna, and I was going to forward that on to the applicant. See, I will ask for representative picture or something.
We, we did, I thought we did provide a picture. It's the same chain link fence as the one that's currently around the soccer fields, the black chain link.
And the question, the question that Jim raised was not so much about the fence itself, but the fabric lining, which would,
they're, they're going to remove the fabric lining now that they've heard Jim's comments. So it'll, it'll be precisely the same fence.
Do we have an image of that, Victoria, in the packet?
There is a detail, it's black and white, but there is a.
Okay.
There is a.
There's a detail, we just didn't have a, we just didn't have a picture. And again, I don't know that it's an issue. We're in for a special permit anyway, but it is something we'd have to discuss.
Well, it would be helpful if you just want to attach the chain, a picture of the chain link fence that exists.
We'll do that.
Thank you. Edna, is that okay?
That'd be great. Thanks.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, I believe we have a draft procedural resolution, Jim?
So we will accept the application and supporting documents is adequate for further review by the planning board, its advisors and the public. We classify the action as type two under seeker. We will schedule a public hearing for May 2nd. Yeah, May 2nd at 6:15. We will be sending this to the CAB for their comments. We will send it to Duchess County Planning for their comments and we need to delegate planning board members for a site visit.
Who would like to visit the nursery school?
I'll go.
I'll go. Hello, Michael, Sean and Michael.
Ron and Michael. Okay, thank you. All right. Any other further questions? If not, I didn't, pardon?
I was gonna say, no, thank you.
Could I have a motion to accept the draft procedural resolution? Thank Sean, second, Edna, all those in favor? Opposed, extension, the motion carries.
Craig.
Okay.
Again, Craig was recused.
Yep, Craig was recused and Craig can come back now. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
The last of the new applications for this evening, Richard Kopchansky, One Chatsel Avenue Tavern Restaurant Site Plan and Special Use Permit. Who is here? Richard?
I am here. This is Warren Smith and Richard Kopchansky, I believe, is on the call as well.
Okay.
This is an application to reauthorize use of the former China Rose Restaurant Space at One Chatsel Avenue for a, a new restaurant after several years of vacancy, I guess. Kip's Tavern, the restaurant will occupy the same space that it did before. There've been some upgrades in the kitchen and so forth, and there will be proposed outdoor dining seasonally on the terrace that faces west with the river. As was intermittently the case when China Rose occupied the space. The site is a very small, typical Hamlet site. There is no possibility for additional parking on the site. So patrons will have to continue to use street parking and, and parking lot parking available close by in the Hamlet and potentially off hours, some of the Amtrak parking. But the site plan basically doesn't show any significant changes from what has existed here before. With the exception of the fact that there is now a, an accessible entrance added on the west side through an existing door into the, into the dining space. So patrons can, can more easily get into the space. There will still be the door that exists at the bottom of Chatsel Avenue, sort of across from the hotel. But there will be the additional entrance there used on a regular basis on the west side. And then the kitchen entrance is further around, sort of at the, the recess of the building there. But that's, that's pretty much the extent of changes to the exterior of the building. There were some renovations inside the building to create accessible restroom, a couple of restrooms. But for the most part, it's very much the space that you will recall if you ever were there in the past.
Okay. Richard, anybody else from your team wish to speak?
No, if you have questions, I'm, I'm the person to ask or Warren.
Okay. Jim, I'll turn it over to you.
Thanks. I have a couple of things. Overall, I wanted to say, you know, as a planner, I'm excited to see, you know, vacant space, you know, being with that to be revitalized and reused. I think that's great for the Hamlet. Never liked to see vacant storefronts and buildings. Do have a couple of comments I wanted to make and, and Richard and Warren, I think I've heard these before. They heard them in the pre-con, but I'm going to mention them again. The first one actually is related to the materials that were submitted. Warren, I didn't see detailed site plans for the use that we were expecting or pictures. I know in a previous application, you gave us kind of the interior floor plans and some pictures of the outside of the building that I guess I was expecting. I think this was the only one that we had received as part of the applications. I was hoping we could get that material submitted for the board. I think, like I say, it was done for the previous one. So it's already developed when we reviewed, I think maybe a year, year and a half ago.
Yeah, 2019, I think, actually.
Yeah. So if there's any way, you know, I know there are pictures, but if there's any way that could be submitted. Sure. Well, just to provide a little more information on kind of what's going on. Like I say, I think it was pretty much done. I think that would just help the board understand kind of what's going on here. If we don't remember that last one, because it was a while ago and the board has reviewed a lot. Yeah. So, so that was my first one, just so we get some more information. The next one, the next to really relate to, to parking and walkability. And again, I know I've mentioned this in the, in the pre-conference meeting, but to me as a bike and pedestrian planner and generally as a planner, you know, walkability is important. I don't know and didn't see in the plans here, any plans for kind of changing the, the walkway in the sidewalk area in front of the building. I really would like to see as a planner that, that the sidewalk be reintroduced there. I think it was there. It's kind of there in some forms, but I really do think a sidewalk running along here is important, particularly given the use that's proposed to go in. Also, you know, kind of what the activity is that we expect to go down there in, in that area. And that brings me to issue number two, which you did touch on, Warren, and that's parking. Parking is a major issue. You acknowledge that. We know that you're proposing to utilize 12 part, public parking space. We know that you're proposing to utilize twelve part public parking spaces on the street. And we are, well, we are absolutely advocates for minimizing unnecessary parking and parking surface areas, you know, utilizing shared parking and other things. You know, the conditions in the Hamlet are tough when it comes to parking. Planning Board does have latitude to consider and address parking, and it's extremely important to, I think, discuss this in the public setting. And with that, you know, I think, you know, I just wanted to mention that, you know, any any use going in in the Hamlet is obviously going to need parking and we understand that. And so you know, the discussion of utilizing the existing parking spaces is fine, but again, we have to acknowledge those are public parking spaces. They aren't dedicated for this, you know, this particular use. And I think Richard and Warren, you both have acknowledged that. But I just want to mention it publicly that, you know, there are significant constraints and we do think the customer experience in the future, you know, could potentially be impacted as more and more businesses come in. There's a new business that came in up the road. Richard, you're proposing to do something. The hotels right now is not being used. That could come back into play. Be looking to utilize parking. You know, all of this is going to be looking to utilize that same public parking. It's our understanding that the Amtrak lot is not really open for public parking anymore. Kind of moving forward. And so that, you know, that's not available to be used to share parking. And we just want to note that, you know, it's it's, you know, we're hoping a lot of people will walk, obviously, but it is important to note that, you know, a lot of people do drive. And with this project and future projects, you know, I'm recommending that the planning board, you know, include a line in approval resolution stating the applicant does acknowledge the past, current, and likely future parking issues and that the town is not going to be responsible for trying to help identify finding new parking or or really addressing these parking issues because we know it's tight and we know there's an issue and we know it's been discussed for a long time. But that kind of comes with the territory of working down in the Hamlet and opening a business in that area. So we wanted to to mention that. Really quickly, going back to the walkability element. You know, it is a commercial use. We want to make sure that the building will be ADA compliant. I don't do ADA compliance reviews. We kind of put that on the applicant to make sure that it is ADA compliant, but we do just want to note that ADA compliance is a responsibility of of commercial business owners. We did read that the operation is approved and maybe Warren, you can touch on this a little more, a little more detail. The operation is approved by the county health department for twenty eight seats at tables and eleven seats at the bar. I don't know how old that is, and we were just thinking that since the previous operation ceased, you know, some time ago, it'd probably be good to confirm that prior approval is still valid unless, you know, Warren or Richard, you have some information you can add to that thought.
I I think it might. We probably would gain two more seats because I took an apartment out upstairs and it has no longer a a kitchen. So I didn't approach the health department, but I believe we would probably get two more seats by the health department.
Because you are on your own septic, right? And then with this process.
Yes.
Yeah. So again, I put that out for the, you know, the planning board to consider if we want to, you know, get any input from the county, just to confirm that that's still is the case and that, you know, we're okay with the numbers. And then my last comment, yeah, my last comment, it's enough for tonight. The proposed sign is supposed to be flush mounted nineteen inches by sixty five inches. The zoning code details with the sign requirements can be. I do believe that sign is actually too large based on the code. I think that the sign can be a maximum of eight square feet in surface area, and I think this comes out somewhere just below nine and about eight point seven square feet. So I just ask you to take a look at the sign and the sign regulations for size. I also think the planning board would probably like to see something a little more definitive in terms of what the sign is going to be. You know, we did get a picture with kind of a sketch on it. But I think the the type of material, things like that, we typically ask for for signs with sign permits in the Hamlet. Melody, that's what I have.
Okay. Is this the only part of the application? Do we have a photograph of the front facade of the building?
I can provide that, certainly.
Well, I think it's important for for planning board members that are not going to be making the site visit to understand, to be able to see and understand Jim's comments regarding the sidewalk.
Yeah, certainly.
So that, I think, would be useful going forward.
Would you like me to pull up one from the last application or pull up?
If you have it handy, yes, because I'd like both the folks going out in the field and those who are not going out in the field to understand the context of your comments.
All right. Well, everyone, while you're talking, I'll pull up a Google map and we can take a look.
Okay, well, while you're doing that, I'll turn to my colleagues and ask if they have questions or comments.
I was struck by the stress in Jim's notes on the lack of parking and the fact that the town will not be responsible for providing it, et cetera, et cetera. Is there a conclusion that better parking is simply not possible to be provided there in Rhine Cliff? Or is this something that the town should be looking at and the planning board should suggest to the town it better be looked at?
Well, I I don't know the details of any discussions that have gone on. I know it's been discussed. It's a general on and off for a long time. There've been discussions related to Amtrak, but beyond that, I just want to make it clear that, you know, if parking for the businesses does become an issue, that, you know, that was acknowledged as we're going through the review process. So that the business owners and the people utilizing those public spaces realize that they are still public spaces.
Michael can confirm my memory, but Edna, I believe that every time we've looked at projects in the Hamlet.
Eleven o'clock today.
Every time we've looked at projects going back to the hotel, you know, obviously, the topic of parking comes up. And Michael can correct me, but I know of no situation where the town themselves have expressed interest in trying to be a party to resolving parking problems in Rhine Cliff.
I would agree with that, Melody, but we had the last time we really addressed parking for a commercial facility to any extent was when they were redoing the Rhine Cliff Hotel. And at that time, CSX was willing to lease under a lease agreement with the hotel operators a fairly significant number of parking places so that they could run the hotel and the restaurant in the hotel. Those spaces are no longer available. I believe Amtrak now controls them, not CSX, and Amtrak has made it clear that they have no interest in sharing their parking area with any other any other user in the Hamlet of Rhine Cliff. And I don't believe the town has ever seriously taken up any discussion of trying to find parking in the Hamlet. Which makes it hard to find a place where you'd put it.
Yeah, you just check that CBA from chess, yeah, to toe.
I I thank you, Hugo. Okay. So this is the situation, and I think Jim, it's pretty evident what Jim's talking about in terms of sidewalk area, so.
Can I address parking?
I would like to just ask Mr. Hanson, who seems to be coming in and out to remain muted until he's asked to speak. Certainly, Richard, go ahead.
Okay, yes. I believe I I've addressed parking in nineteen ninety four when I bought the building. You know, up and down Chatswell Avenue on that left side of this picture, it was just open parking and Amtrackers would be there for a day, three days, five days. And also the lot, which is up around the trees on the left, there was, it wasn't for Rhine Cliff businesses and and residents only. It was me who went to the town and said, we have to do something about that for Rhine Cliff businesses and residents because it's just being taken over by Amtrackers. So in nineteen ninety four, that's when we have, we got the two hour parking signs all the way up Chatswell Avenue, and that's that's eight spaces right there. Our little lot, which is for Rhine Cliff residents and businesses only that we changed in nineteen ninety four, there's fifteen spaces there. Now, that's all the same since nineteen ninety four. In nineteen ninety nine, I bought a building around the corner that has five garages and two extra spaces out in front of two of the garages. And in two thousand and six, I built a little up up the street here on the right hand side. A a a small two office, one downstairs, one upstairs, six hundred square feet. You know, it's good for one person maybe on each floor. So we had to put parking and instead of putting two parking spaces, we put six in. So that all those things that I've worked with since nineteen ninety four to to get more parking. And I I I believe we did a really good job and 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 getting that done and securing more parking, you know, not only do, you know, is that parking used behind that green building up the street for the two little offices, but like when we have a fence at the Morton Library, I will, you know, direct people to park behind that building, you know, we and yeah, here's here's the public parking for Rhine Cliff residents and businesses only right here. Well done, Jim. And I would be without taking a building down and make parking. Yeah, I I just don't think we can do anything else.
Okay.
Yeah, Richard, I'm not. I'm not advocating taking a building down. I just want to make sure we have.
No, 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 I know.
Everyone understands, you know, the parking is tight and we're talking about businesses who want customers and just need to understand, you know, what what it is we're talking about here in terms of parking. But no, I would never advocate for taking down buildings to 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 put in parking. It's just a discussion I think the planning board needs to have. We understand, you know, their uses coming back in, which is great. Like I say, we don't want to see vacant vacant structures, but we all have to understand kind of what what that comes with, you know. Planners have a saying, a lack of parking is a good thing. Too much parking is a bad thing. It means nobody's there if there's too much parking, right? So it's it's, you know, it's it is what it is, but we just have to understand that and, you know, make sure everyone's comfortable with it as we move forward because I do believe there'll be others, you know, other businesses coming in proposing to utilize the same spaces. That's all. But yeah, I would never, yeah, never talk about taking down a building. And I do think it would be really tough to find, you know, a significant amount of parking within a, you know, a short walk, we'll say, of where we are here. So, yeah, I agree.
Hey. Thank you. Thank you, Richard. Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
All right. So I think unless there are other questions from the planning board, we can move to the draft procedural resolution.
One second, I have to switch my files here.
Okay.
Okay, draft procedure resolution. Again, accept the application and supporting documents is adequate for further review by the planning board, its advisors in the public. Classify this as type two under seeker. We will schedule the public hearing for May second at six fifteen. In accordance to Tonco Chapter Nine, send it to the CAB. In accordance to Chapter one eighteen, send it to the Waterfront Advisory Committee. In accordance with Chapter one twenty five, refer this to HAPAC because we are in the historic district. Also send this to Dutchess County Planning for their review. And we need to delegate planning board members for a site visit.
I would like to go to Rhine Cliff.
I'll go.
I'll go, Delise. Edna and Delise. Thank you very much. All right. Could I have a motion to accept the draft procedural resolution? Thank you, Edna. Second?
Second, Joe.
That. Thank you, Joe. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed, abstention, the motion carries. Thank you very much. Thank you, Richard and Warren.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
So we're going to move into the public hearing portion of our meeting tonight. And up first is Rockledge, four ninety two Ackert Hook Road, condo units, site plan approvals, special use permit and wetlands permit. At the request of the applicant.
Oh, Melody, let me just interrupt you, just tell you that I'm I'm recused on this, so I'm going to depart.
Okay, Edna is continuing her position of recusing herself, which she's done from the first day of this application. Thank you for reminding me, Edna. At the request of the applicant, we will be continuing this public hearing until May. They are not going to be present tonight to present any additional information or participate in the meeting, but it is a public hearing. And so I will at this time entertain members of the public who wish to make comments. If you raise your hand, I will ask Jim, who's handling everything to admit people to make comments. And remind you of the public comment format that Jim's put up. Raise your hand. State your name and address. Limit your comments to five minutes. Provide only new comments. And direct your questions to the planning board. And since there's no applicants represented tonight, you can just direct your questions to the planning board. Okay.
Right. Looks like the first up, we have Cornelia Gallo.
Sorry, getting set up here. Um, Cornelia Gallows, three forty Ackert Hook Road. Thank you for your time this evening. Based on comments during the last planning board meeting and the Red Hook Daily Catch article, I would like to submit the following comments and thoughts. I'm sorry that Mr. Blakeman and the developers feel that we, as the neighbors, are acting in our own interest, which is a quote from the article. We're not. We are acting to preserve a neighborhood and a town that has become our home. As I have stated before, I am not against the project. I think the repurposing of the manor house with six units and the chapel with two units is a wonderful idea. And then maybe an additional twelve units in two to three clusters would be appropriate for the neighborhood. In the Daily Catch article, Mr. Blakeman had said Rockledge will house at least seventy two residents. The section of Ackert Hook Road between Fly and Primrose Hill currently only has about thirty two people in residence. Rockledge would more than triple the population. By limiting the project to eighteen to twenty units, you still increase the population by a hundred percent. That kind of change will change the feel of the neighborhood. There's there's no way it can't. During the the last planning board meeting, Mr. Blakeman also said he would consider walking paths. I'm curious how walking paths would differ from the neighbors being able to walk the roads in Rockledge. When asked during a face to face meeting in two thousand and nineteen, if neighbors could walk the Rockledge roads, all four of the Lockridge Rockledge representatives simultaneously from the front row said no. And it left a really lasting impression. I think it also gave the current neighbors and us versus them feeling. I don't need to walk. I don't need the walking paths as I would still be walking the roads to access them, but it would be nice to be able to walk the roads. I thank the planning board for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Cornelia.
David?
Hi, I'm David Weiner. I live at three oh six Ackert Hook Road about a third of a mile from the proposed Rockledge site. I appreciate the opportunity this evening to speak to you in the democratic process, a nice, open process. But the minute I look at some of the other processes you have, I'm very concerned. In response to a press inquiry, I attempted to help a journalist obtain not only the developer's material on site, but also materials that were the copious materials that were submitted by the public. And we found that the public comments are not online and not available. This certainly inhibits any kind of public discussion and public awareness. So we have to insist that the board post public comments on this and other projects. It's just not appropriate to post only developer materials. Also, we really have to insist that the planning board engage in public consultation to identify independent consultants to review consultant reports submitted by the developer, particularly in the area of the environment and traffic. I guess this, I understand this may be part of the seeker process, but it's very clear that the studies that have been submitted in particularly in relation to traffic and some of the environmental issues that the public has expressed concern about are 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 clearly, it raises a lot of questions that do not appear to be appropriately answered by consultants who have been paid for and controlled by the by the developer. This is a very important issue. And then finally, I'm very. And then finally, I'm very concerned about the objectivity of the board. Given recent comments by Edna Lockman. I, we really have to insist that the board issue a plan to assure its unbiased review of the Rockledge proposal. After Edna Lockman, a planning board member who has recused herself from review of the Rockledge proposal, tainted the planning board's process by publishing material supporting the project and, and really criticizing other people who've criticized the project. This is completely unacceptable. It, it taints the entire process and we really need to know what you're going to do to fix this, this mess that's been created. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David. Jim.
All right. Next, we have John Carlo.
Hi there. My name is John Carlo here in Calvo. I live at 40 RNet Road in Rhinebeck. Um, I'm 24. And I, as someone from a younger generation, I'm kind of surprised at pushback on this project. I don't know any of my friends who can reasonably afford to return to Rhinebeck after graduating college without either an inheritance or living at their parents' house. This is a big project, but it's really not that. It's a big restoration project, but it's really not that many houses. And hopefully it could reduce the actual expense of housing in that region. Also, I'm kind of surprised by the talking about walking on Ackert Hook Road because those roads, I don't know if you guys have been on them, people are flying. I've never felt safe to walk in any of those back roads. Growing up in Rhinebeck, I could never walk on those roads because all those back roads, people are doing 50, 60 miles an hour. And the project is talking about walking paths. They're talking about paying to redo a historic site. This is a good project for the town. It could hopefully make it so people would actually afford to live here. I don't know if you guys have seen, but houses are being sold cash for double their value right now in the town. And it's kind of ridiculous to me that we're blocking housing in a town that is popular. They're doing everything they can. I read through all the reports for the environmental report, the traffic reports. Yeah, sure, we could bring in someone independent, but the more we stonewall projects like this, the higher development costs are going to go. And then housing becomes in turn more expensive. And I know some people's nest egg is their house, but we're not building enough housing to destroy property values just to relieve some of the pressure because right now it's a ridiculous bubble. And there's a lot of pent-up demand for our area because it's a great area. The schools are great. I went to my high school. I loved it. And I, it's just surprising to me that there's so much pushback on this and especially to hear. I think also there, if there's recusals on the board and planning committees because they're pro for the project, I really think everyone who is against the project or has a financial interest or is running a website should also get off the planning and approval for this process because I'm surprised by the money that is being spent against this project. Just, just want to say as someone who's younger, who's looking at buying a house soon, like I can't come back to Rhinebeck and miss living my parents. That, that's the fact of the matter. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jean Carlo.
Patty, oh, sorry, Melody.
No, I was going to say Patty's next. And I just want to remind people that this is an opportunity night for a public hearing and people get to voice their opinion. I don't want to get into public debate between various people. So I just want to remind you of that. I like to put the emphasis on hearing and not debate. So with that, we'll go to Patty.
Hi, planning board. This is Patty Lanto. I am at 220 Fly Road. A near neighbor of Rockledge. And I, Jean Carlo, I really applaud your perspective. I wish my children could move to Rhinebeck. I would, I would ask that you inquire about the offering price for the development units that are going in at Rockledge. My primary concern again is the waterway that the wastewater treatment plant will flow into. It is known as the Fallsburg Creek is the strong word. It is a lot of wetlands. It is a pond. It is a dry stream bed. It is sometimes a stream, all of those things. So I'm very concerned about that particular aspect of this development. I'm also concerned because I've been out to the D E C website and have attempted to stay tuned in to the Speedy's permitting process and have found that according to the research that Edna spoke of at her last comment at the last public hearing, we would have a 30-day window once the New York State D E C had given approval of the Speedy's permit. And it's just not clear to me how we would stay tuned in to know that 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 permit had been entered and that, and what state it's in. So I'm a little concerned about having it all just washed over me and then hear about it after the fact. And I'd like some, some help with that. So that's all.
Thank you, Patty.
Okay, I think next I know David had his hand up, but I think we'll go with people who haven't yet spoken, maybe go to Eleanor and then David, we can go back to you since you did speak already. So Eleanor.
Did that sound reasonable?
Hey, I just wanted to say that I'm also concerned about the project and I'm concerned about the number of projects that have suddenly popped up. And is anybody looking at how they're going to impact the surrounding area altogether? It's not going to be just one project. It's going to be grassmere. It's going to be, you know, I hear that there's another project with 80 units, whether that's true or not, I don't know, but I've heard that a couple of times. So I think that we need to slow things down and maybe wait for that comprehensive committee, that review committee to, or whatever it's called, to come up with some recommendations before we get too far into the process. You know, maybe we should just slow things down a bit and look a little bit more closely at how they're going to interact and impact the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Eleanor.
All right, David.
Thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak again, and I appreciate everybody's comments, whether, whether people agree with me or not. I think it's really great that any member of the public is engaged in this. I just would like to point out in reference to some of the previous comments that one of the developers' representatives indicated that the estimated pricing of these units would be somewhere in the neighborhood of 1.5 million to $2 million. That in no way is going to lower housing costs in this area. And it is in no way going to solve the housing crisis, simply going to draw more wealthy people and create more congestion and more environmental problems. You know, everybody's welcome, but we, we really need to welcome people under the intention of the comprehensive plan. And secondly, I would like to point out that there was some talk of the paths that are on this property and the buildings that are presumably going to be rehabilitated and preserved. Those building, the develop, the developers representative previously said in response to my question that this is a private development. So if I or any member, any of my neighbors or any member of my family attempted to walk or look at those rehab buildings or walk on those paths, I would be breaking the law. I would be trespassing. Secondly, I would like, thirdly, I'd like to point out that I walk, ride my bike and I have neighbors who ride their horses along Ackert Hook Road and other roads in this area. It is becoming more and more difficult and this project will simply destroy a quality of life that I paid a substantial amount of money to enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim, is there anyone else?
Melody, I'm not seeing anyone. We'll just give it a second. Kara, leave your hand up.
Hi, hi, everybody. Thanks very much. Just a couple of quick things. This is Kara Keywell. I'm at 467 Ackert Hook Road. I know that there's nobody speaking for the, for the developers per se, but I did notice that Mark Grominski is on the call and I was wondering if we could get a copy of the what he read out at the last public hearing about the status of their submission. I don't believe it's in the boulder.
Thank you, Kara.
And secondly, just also on, on, in response to the, the hard work that Gary and Edna Lockman did on analyzing the neighborhood, I just did want to say that five acre zoning is a, is a, is a limit, not a goal. So, so the fact that there are smaller properties already and, and we think that's wonderful because it makes this area accessible to all kinds of homeowners. The, the fact that we're already below five acres on average on a lot of the surrounding roads is, is not a reason to give up on the five acre limit. It's all the more reason to enforce it and to not only seek five acre properties to balance out the smaller properties, but to and the, and the strain that the, the density already puts on the roads and to encourage people in people donating land and putting land in conservation for perpetuity. So I think those would be two made the, oh, I just wanted to say on this path issue as well. I understand that it, on the face of it, it sounds like a very nice offer, but unlike the road, it, who would it be accessible to? Only, only the homes that are directly opposite it because there's no parking to reach this path through Rockledge and through these other properties. And to whom would it be accessible unless it's really well cured? You know, it would only be for able-bodied people and nobody with, you know, any kind of disability or strolling or strollers certainly would be available to cyclists. So I think that that's important to keep in mind that those needs are already met by the road, which connects us not only to Fly Marsh, but all the way, all the way into town. And, and we, it's, the burden is not on the neighbors then to maintain that as well. Our tax dollars go to maintaining the road. So I just wanted to make those at this point. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Not seeing any of the hands raised, Melody.
All right. Then I would like to hear a motion to continue the public hearing. Gretchen, what would be the date? Would it be?
May 2nd.
May 2nd. So could I have a motion to continue the public hearing until May 2nd?
So moved, Sean.
Thank you, Sean. Second, please.
Second, Joe.
Thank you, Joe. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed, extensions? Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone. Next up, Brindle Valley Phase 3, 167 to 169 River Road. Parking reconfiguration and half basketball court site plan and special use permit. This particular application is going to be continued, the public hearing aspect of it. And I think Michael can give a report as to why at this time we're not discussing it tonight. Michael, are you there?
Yeah, let me make sure. Okay. This afternoon, while I was CEO-ing, a neighbor of the project came in and asked me what I knew about the what appeared to be some sort of a golf course facility on the lawns there at this particular property. I had not seen this. Apparently a, at least one AstroTurf putting green with a golf hole and a, and a flag has been installed on the property, which obviously is a alteration to the approved landscape plan that they provided us with and that we approved. So the planning board is restricted from proceeding with any review of a project if a violation exists on the property where that project is taking place. So until we can resolve this, and I believe I've spoken with Mr. Grominski about it, he is going to see to it that this gets resolved so that this issue goes away. But for tonight, we do have a, an apparent violation on the property of the approved site plan for that particular property. And based on the town zoning law, we would not be permitted to continue.
Okay, planning board members, any questions? Okay. I'm going to ask then for a motion to continue the public hearing and because of the way this is piling up, I'd like to continue this one to the first meeting in June. Gretchen, what would the date be in June?
One sec. June 6th.
All right. I'd like a motion to continue the public hearing to June 6th. Thank you, Edna. Second, Craig, all those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, extensions. May I also say that I think you probably today, I believe you've received today a feather, a, a rather comprehensive review from the C A B on this project. And I would encourage you to look at that because I think unfortunately with this delay, fortunately, we have an opportunity to look at some of the issues that were raised by the C A B. So I'd encourage you to do that. There was, was there public, were there site visits made on this?
Yes.
I think I'm going to defer the report on the site visits tonight until we get back on the agenda in June. So those of you who are tasked with that, write it down so you remember when we get to the next meeting in June.
Okay.
Thanks so much. Next up is T Court Phase 2B, 195 River Road Miniature Train. Central and Southern Loop Site Plan Special Use Permit and Wetlands Permit. Tonight, based on some of the questions that we've raised in the past, Mark, on behalf of the applicant, has arranged for two experts to join us and to comment. One is the chief of the fire department, who I believe has visited the site. And the other is a person with expertise in the construction and development of miniature trains. So Mark, I'll turn it over to you and let you introduce your folks.
Thank you, Melody. And actually, Howard Williams is also here representing T Court LLC. So I think just to you know, keep things moving along for the planning board. The, you know, Melody, you mentioned the two representatives. So it's Chief Amy from the Rhinebeck Fire Department. And also Dave Slavi, he's our train consultant. And you know, if, and I, I look to you if, if to start with, you know, with the most efficient way to, you know, go about tonight's meeting, would it be, you know, starting with some questions from the planning board? You know, with regard to, you know, with regard to, you know, pertaining to the fire chief, I know safety was a concern and, and how that is going to be, you know, handled through the Rhinebeck Fire Department and the same thing available to speak, you know, with regard to, you know, construction, you know, maintenance, any details related to the train. So just in an effort to keep things moving along with this tonight's meeting, do you want to start with some questions from the board?
Well, I, I maybe I'd like to start with Chief Amy. And if he would like to just tell us, you know, I know he made a site visit. Maybe he'd like to share his observations. Any concerns he saw while he was in the field? And then I'll open it up to planning board members for their questions of the chief. Does that work? Does that work?
That's fine.
Okay. Can the chief, is he here?
I believe so. Let's see.
Jim, do you see the chief?
Don't by name, I don't think.
I think it's, Howard, where was it again? It was?
It was K iPhone, but I think he has gone off the list.
All right. Well, let's, let's start with your miniature train expert. And if Kyle comes back on, we'll go back to him.
I'll reach out, I'll reach out to Kyle while Dave's speaking. Howard, could you?
Yeah, I'll just, just introduce Dave. Dave has been working on our project for the past three years or so. Just came in to give us some professional guidance on just how to lay out a train, what its curvature is, the elevations of these, the pitches of them, some of the electrical components, how do all of these function? So he's been incredibly valuable to us. I think his experience goes back quite a few decades. And I'll let him step in to, to tell you what that experience really is. Dave?
Dave, you're muted.
Dave, you're muted.
How's that? Okay. My name is David Slavi. I'm the owner of Mercer Locomotive Works. It's in Trenton, New Jersey. I've been involved with this project for about three years now. And primarily my experience, or my I'm in charge of, or here to consult on everything that has to do with the train itself, the track, the safety of the trains, how the trains are operated. And I have nothing to do with the actual construction of the trestles other than some advice on what to do with those. So I'm here to answer your questions. If you have any questions, fire away.
Okay, I'll open it up to planning board members. So Dave?
Question. Sorry, go ahead, Melody.
No, I was just going to say, so you are not involved in the construction of the tracks at all. Is that correct? You are?
I am involved in the construction of the actual track, the laying of the track only. Not the grading, that's Mark's department. Not the, not the design of the trestles or anything to do with Robert Murray's design. I will lay the track or be in charge of laying the track with a crew of people, three or four.
Are you the fabricator of the track?
We will be here, yes.
Yeah, Melody, if I could, if I could step in on this too. You know, Dave's expertise is in having had built and participated in the construction of a number of these, the scale of train in different locations, as well as he's a member of, I think, at least several different, it's called live steam clubs, which are just groups that operate such facilities. So he has an operational understanding of trains. And so we will be using other people to actually construct this, but following some of the information that he's given us into how these things should operate.
That's correct.
Dave, what do you think the greatest challenges are?
I don't see any problem at all building the track. I've done several of these. Answering some of the, well, we've already done that in the last couple of meetings. I watched the height of the trestle and that's been reduced. So that's a good thing. And I don't see any other problems whatsoever in laying the track. It's pretty straightforward. We make track panels of 10 feet in length at a different location, a shop somewhere. And then they're transported there on a trailer and then we lay them down. We have to have the ballast in place and so on. And we lay them down, we connect them together, we level them out. And just the basic operation of the train itself, that's it. But there's not really too much, something I've done before. It's not, not a problem at all.
Delise, you had some comments or questions?
Yeah, I was just gonna, I think we talked a little bit about this in another meeting, but just to talk a little bit about like the electric that runs under it, as well as the water and how frequently it needs to be refilled, or anything that he can say about the steam process. And then also I just wanted to get some more feedback about access and maintenance.
Okay. There are, or there is a need for electrical that runs along the entire right of the track, but it's low voltage. It's only 15 volts. And that's supplied by an outside power supply. And that's only used for signals and for the electrical operation of the switches. So you would push a button and the switch would change from one direction to another. And they're also done manually as well. What was the other question you had about maintenance? Was it?
Also the steam, like how much volume of water, what's the refill process?
Okay. All right. The steam locomotives, my train, we'll use that as an example. Has a 20 gallon tank that's attached to the engine and I can, that'll last me an hour, 20 gallons of water. And as far as firing it up, you fire those up at a designated space that we will have constructed eventually. It's called the steaming bay, which is elevated a little bit. And we fire the train up there and then once it's fired up, it's able to go onto the track and run the train, or cat pool train.
Great. One more question about the electric and then I'll ask. So their electric runs the entire track. What is, is it just like in conduit, slightly under the surface? Like how does it get, you know, placed?
Well, when we, okay, the track bed is eight inches deep. We lay about four inches of stone. We put a one inch conduit alongside the trenches, 24 inches wide. Then we lay the track in there and then we ballast over top of the track and over top of the conduit. It's a plastic conduit that runs the entire, and that's for the signal system. There's going to be a signal system for safety. And that, that electric, that electric supplies the signals and the operation of electrical switches to move from one track to another by pushing a button.
Yeah, to be, to be, add a little more specificity there, the conduit will just follow the line of the track.
Right.
We don't want to cut between loops. And there are enough switches where that's actually economical for us to do it this way, to connect the dots essentially with the electric lines. They are just small two inch, maybe even four inch conduits that are just underneath the ballast. Because it's not line voltage, we don't have to bury it significantly as you would for typical electrical. And, and that also will run next to the water lines that will go to, here, it could be two or three located about an equidistance away from the train station, the yard where the course of water supply is. Just in case that, you know, one of these steam engines does happen, just start to run out of water out there, they can't get back. They have some access to that. Now that'll just be an irrigation line. That's, that's probably just a one inch irrigation conduit line to a spigot. And each, each winter that will be blown out. So we don't have to bury that deep below the grave either. That'll be placed right underneath the ballast.
That's true.
I'll let some, I have, I was gonna ask a question about maintenance, but Craig, you go. I don't, I want to make sure everyone gets their questions in.
Okay, sorry. I didn't, I didn't mean to interrupt your, your.
Hand it over anyway.
You had said that these are fired in one location. Does that mean that the train cars themselves do not carry a fuel source? Or? Okay, how are they fueled?
Coal. Well, there's three different types. There's coal, there's propane, and there's oil. This, we choose to start with coal. We could go to propane if we needed to, but I wouldn't recommend oil. But that's how they're fired. And you can, we carry our own supply, the engine and the car behind it. A lot of people call it the coal car, but it's actually called a tender that has the water and the coal in there, or the other fuel, whatever fuel you're going to use. And that, the engine is one unit. And we couple up the cars, all the cars, I want to mention this too, the all of the cars have air brakes on them. And it's called a fail-safe brake. So if something should happen and the train should come apart, the brakes go on immediately and the train stops right where it come apart. So it's a fail-safe brake, not unlike the ones that are used on the prototype. Air pressure turns it off. Okay. Can I answer, could I answer the question that Delise had about the maintenance?
For sure.
And this is something that's important. All of the trains will have a card with the name, number, the engine, the number of the car, the type of car, everything that's built onto the car, all the maintenance and everything that's done to each car whenever it comes in for maintenance. Like for example, we check the wheels, we check the brakes, we check the cylinders. And that's all records that we're going to maintain. Secondly, I'm going to write up, part of my job is to write up a manual on the safe operation of the trains and also give classes on how to operate these trains. Most of the time I'll probably be running them, but other people could run them. And I'm going to train those people on how to do that. I'm also going to have a total manual on, on the maintenance of the locomotive with pictures and also about possibly video to go with. So let's answer that question. And also the track will have the same, the same type of a maintenance. For instance, that one switch would be a number on it, like number one switch. Okay, today we changed the bolts on the thing or whatever requires the fixing, that'll all be recorded. And that's all for your insurance. So anything that possibly could happen, we say, well, okay, we just checked this two weeks ago and this was all, everything was okay at that point. So that's some of the things that I want to incorporate into the whole project.
Yeah, I'd like to add one more thing to what David said, because he was describing to you how the, the steam engines are fueled. Steam engines are just one of the possible type of engines to pull the cars here. Those, those are very expensive and they're, they're a bit more complicated to operate than, than say an electric engine. So we're going to have a variety of different types of engines. We'll probably start off with about three. And it may go up to about maybe five or six eventually. But there'll be different types of power source. The electric ones, obviously you can just get on them, turn a switch and you can go. So there's an advantage to that. The steam ones do require a couple of hours of building up the steam so that you can actually operate. So that's a very different kind of experience that.
Do they generate a significant amount of smoke?
No, you're, you're talking about a very, very, very small engine here. When you, when you, when you're putting coal into one of these things, you're putting a small handful of coal into the fire.
Yeah, I could answer that. You remember the old metal beach shovel we used to have? That's the kind of shovel we use. So it's like a little tiny shovel and like a handful of coal. And one time, another, another time I told Howard this story, I was asked that same question, how much smoke they put in. It was in a public park. And they had a bunch of barbecues out there and actually the train makes less smoke than the barbecues did. So that gives you kind of some kind of an idea of how much smoke it makes, very little.
Okay. I have a question for Dave.
Yep.
Yep, thanks, Edna.
You mentioned that it was a good thing that they have lowered the height of some of the trestles. Why was that a good thing?
Well, I just think that being that high up is not as good as it should be. I like, I like the lower. Because of the terrain we have, we're forced to use these trestles because we have a certain grade that we have to maintain, a 1.6 at the maximum. So that's why we kind of switched it around and everything. And I like the idea of a lower trestle, just, I think it looks better. A little bit more blending in with the surface. We're going to be making these out of core 10, which is a material that rusts and it turns a brownish color. So it's going to blend in with the, with the scenery, I guess. And we're not going to be painting it, which paint would maybe eventually come off and look kind of crappy. But the steel that I've specified to use on these is what's called a core 10, which rusts a little bit and then it doesn't rust anymore. So it's like a brownish color. And I just like the idea of the slower trestles. I just think they're not as obtrusive looking. They look better. The only reason why I said that.
And you've been around a few of these, you've been involved with a few of these. What is, what has been, what have been the safety issues, if any, in your experience?
The safety issues that are only ones that I know of are how the people are located or loaded into the cars. Now, we don't intend to have 20 people on this train. It's possible, but we're probably not going to have that many, maybe one, two or three people. Secondly, every train will have, of course, an engineer on the engine with a radio. And the guy sitting all the way at the last car with a radio and it'll be in communication with each other. So if anything happens, he say, whoa, Dave, shut the train off. Okay. And we do that. And that's the biggest safety issue that may happen. Something happens, the train goes off the track, wheel derails, which is very unusual. Doesn't happen that often if everything's set up correctly. And that's one of my jobs too, to make sure everything is set correctly. And of course, on the trestles now, we have guardrails. No problem at all, six foot wide. Very rarely will the trains derail.
Yeah. And Dave, can you describe what happens when a train derails? Do the cars tip over?
No. They don't tip over. Well, first of all, the way the road bed is laid out, it's laid out like to grade, I guess, is that what we'll call it?
Yes.
To the level of the actual track on each side. It's not up on a mound. And when it derails, it just stays right there. Now, like I mentioned before, the train comes apart, the brakes go on. So it's going to stop right there. It's not going to roll down the hill. It's not going to roll anymore on the track. It's not going to go backwards. It's going to stay right where it stopped. And that's the nice feature about the fail-safe brake, which is exactly like the prototype. Westinghouse developed it in the 1890s. So it's a miniature. I've developed a miniature version of that.
Wonderful. Edna, do you have more questions?
I just have one more question.
Sure.
When I look at the photographs of people on the train and I look at the adults and their, their legs, of course, are all the way down to the track level. What's to prevent somebody's leg from getting stuck, caught? I don't know. Just looks dangerous to me.
Well, the cars that were shown were like a flat type car, which is 15 inches wide and the track's only seven inches wide. So there's nothing to catch your foot on under a wheel. If the trains aren't heavy enough to cut your foot.
I think what he's saying is that the wheels are actually narrower than the width of the, of the vehicle itself. So the sides of the, of the, the car are two or three inches out from the wheel. And they're low to the ground. So it's a little bit difficult to actually get your foot.
I want to also mention, I want to also mention, Howard, that type of cars that we're using, you will be sitting in the cars, not over the car, like we're shown with a flat car. There'll be a passenger type car where you sit with your legs inside of it. So it's impossible for your legs to come out of it.
Would probably be helpful to see.
You may have a picture of it. I don't know.
An image of that. Dave, one thing I wanted to ask is, you talked about training manuals and operational manuals. Do you have examples of those from other installations that you might provide us so that we can see the? Not tonight, Dave. Not tonight, Dave. Not tonight. But I think it would, it would be very reassuring for people to see the, the, obviously, the great detail you go to to make this operation safe. So why don't you talk with Mark and Howard and see what examples you could send? So we could take a look at those. Other members of the planning board?
Melody, this is Jim. I have a comment. It's for Mark and Howard and Robert. I took a look at the, I guess it's the newly submitted trestle diagrams we had up earlier. Um, just asking to take a look at those. Um, the list that was on there showed the highest trestle at seventeen feet. But the sketch that's on there showing the highest trestle gets it up to twenty four feet. I just want to make sure we are staying under the twenty feet for the accessory use. And if the, if the diagram is wrong, let's just amend the diagram. So that the numbers are right for the, the final submission.
Right.
Just, I think it's an, I'm guessing it's an inconsistency because you have said it's.
Yeah, it is, it is. We're, we're definitely under twenty for the, for the height, so.
Yeah, but if we can amend that one to show it under twenty, um, that, that would be good. Just so, again, there isn't any kind of confusion.
Sure.
Um, I did have a quick question for David. I only was, was, uh, asked, how fast do these go, say at their top speed?
I've asked that question many, many times.
I'm sure.
Uh, you, you don't want to know how fast does it go and how much does it weigh? Well, how fast does it go? Probably no, I know for sure, eight miles an hour. That's about the maximum, possibly you can go ten, but about eight miles an hour. Depends on the size of the train wheels. The, the drive, the locomotive wheels, a big wheel will go a little bit faster, a small wheel goes a little bit slower. But, uh, for the most part, eight miles an hours on average, most of the time we'll be going six and five. Not, not very fast at all. So if anything should happen, you can almost shut down immediately and stop within a foot or two.
Yeah, that was my last question, stopping distance. Okay, thank you.
Right, uh, one other thing I would like to add, and a lot of times people don't have the real concept of what these trains are. They're not amusement park trains in the slightest. They're not amusement park trains at all. These trains are scale models of actual trains. Like, for example, somebody comes to me and they want to build a certain type of locomotive that was actually on a real prototype railroad. I go out and I get the drawings, I make everything exactly scale as it was in the prototype, just a little smaller. It's one eighth the size. So if you took eight trains, put them together that way, eight trains, put them together that way, and they train tie, that's how big the thing would be. So it's inch and a half to the foot scale and they're true scale models of the actual trains that ran on a, with a particular railroad, the Pennsylvania railroad. The New York Central Railroad and so on. So they're not amusement park trains whatsoever.
Thank you, Dave.
Park trains are a different, different breed.
Okay, thank you. Jim, anything else on your list?
No, I, I think the chief may be on. I don't know, Mark, if you know, is it K iPhone or?
I think that's it, Jim. I've texted, I emailed and texted.
All right, I, I, I just want to thank Dave. I think this has been very helpful. Hi Kyle, uh, yes, hello chief. How are you? Thank you, thank you for joining us.
Not a problem. I, I can make this pretty quick if I may, just with, um, with actually walking the site and looking at the proposed plan and everything. Um, there is no, um, which appears any kind of safety issue that's gonna hinder us. Of any kind of rescue work or anything with this project. Um, I, I wish these projects, uh, that, that we're reviewing here were as easy as, uh, you know. I, I wish rides coming in Duchess County Fair were easy as this. Or, or, or some of the, some of the, you know, things we run into up to Fern Cliff Forest as well, you know, with accessibility and everything. So this is, this is pretty much a walk in a park for us. Um, but you know, as far as the concern about whether the trestles are twenty feet high. You know, we can walk up to that, um, on the tracks, the way as, as spoken before, on each side where handrail is. If we need to remove somebody off, if the train does stop, or we may need any kind of assistance for a medical emergency. But, uh, we walked a whole property and the property with the equipment that we have with ATVs that are equipped with stretchers. Um, like I said, it's, it's nothing, this project, like I said, on this, you know, my opinion is, uh, will not hinder any of our operations whatsoever.
And, um, Emma, do I understand that the applicant is also willing to keep an ATV or something on the premises to assist you?
Well, I mean, I, I mean, I, obviously, you know, I, we have our own. Um, I, you know, we wouldn't use an outside T ATV. You know, the simple fact is that there's ever emergency, we always look at large, large properties like this, you know, where, wherever we're going is that somebody meets us. You know, at least in the beginning and take us with, take us to the location. So we're not trying to, you know, figure this out, going through any of the trails that they do have accessibility at. So, you know, which will definitely, you know, I would hope, you know, and, and usually that falls under the nine one one center. Somebody calls in, you know, can you meet EMS or fire personnel at such and such? And then, you know, that information will be relayed. But as far as them having any ATV, you know, we would, that would not. We would not need their, we have our four wheel drives and our ATVs equipment to be able to, uh, to be able to handle anything.
Okay, um, planning board members, do you have any questions of Chief Amy?
Uh, yeah.
I'm sorry, go ahead Craig.
Okay, yeah, I was just gonna say, uh, would you, uh, uh, chief, would you recommend, uh, some kind of like a. A final walkthrough, like as the project is nearing completion, you know, any kind of like a. You know, training session that, that you would have, I mean, does that need to be part of the process? Obviously, obviously with the, uh, obviously when this, when this project is completed. Um, I would definitely, you know, would like to do a walkthrough to make sure, obviously, and not saying that they're not, that all handrails are in place. And that we can see where emergency shut offs are and so forth, or, or, you know. You know, where we can look at where the control room is. So we know, we're familiar with anything. So if we need to. You know, assist with any kind of shutdown or so forth, uh, yes, we definitely, uh, as, as. We, we talked, uh, when we did the walk around to, when this is complete, um, to take a walkthrough. And, uh, as I said to him, I said, and take a ride on it.
I would like pictures of that, please. Um, uh, Delise.
Uh, maybe it's a new point. I was just gonna say that for ATVs to get access, you have the trestle. Uh, uh, and just to get a visual for me, is there like a small maintained pathway, I assume, that goes adjacent to the tracks for ATV access?
Yes, yes, there's actually, there actually where, and it's, and it's kind of where the, where the trestles, where the, where the tracks come on ground level and go up to the trestle. Believe it or not, we could actually, if we had to. Which I don't think we do with the way these tracks are built with walkways on each side, our ladder truck can actually get in there and we could extend the ladder to the cars.
Thank you.
Other planning board members. Okay, uh, thank you Howard and Mark for bringing Dave and the chief here tonight. I think it's been very instructive. Um, and with that, unless Dave or the chief have anything more to add, I think we can let them go. And, um, then we can wrap up with Jim where we are.
I'm all, I'm all set and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much for coming. We appreciate it. Any parting words, Dave?
Yeah, just, uh, thank you as well. I've been watching a lot of these meetings because I've been involved for now three years. And we're anxious to get trains running. And by the way, if the chief wants to run the train, I'll show him how to operate it. I'll show you how to operate it, any of you. It's not that hard. And it's a lot of fun.
One last question and maybe it's part of your, your manuals. Is there, uh, is there an annual inspection or, I mean, I know you're inspecting things all the time. But is there a timetable for inspection?
Um, no, because, uh, it's, it's a constant ongoing thing. For example, if I'm running along the train and I see something that's a problem, I make a note of it either mentally or on paper. And then the next day or whenever we do with the maintenance once a week or whatever it is, we go out and repair it. We do this at our train clubs. I belong to two train clubs, the Pennsylvania Live Steamers and the New Jersey Live Steamers. And they're called live steamers because the trains are steam driven. Uh, but it's also called an outdoor miniature railroading as well. And every Wednesday, we have a crew of people go out there and maintain the track and level it and do whatever you need to do to, to keep it, uh, ma- maintenance. Keep the maintenance up. It's, it's important that the track be level. So it can't have any dippity doos and stuff like.
No, no, dippity doos.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, um, thanks again, Dave, and I'll turn it back to Jim. Jim, do you want to summarize where we are? I mean, we're gonna be continuing the public hearing, but. Oh, don't tell me Jim went away. That's not a good thing.
He's, he's there, he's muted.
Oh no, that's even worse.
Sorry, I'm here, I, I. Sorry, so what do we need?
Uh, well, I think we're gonna continue the public hearing. You, uh, you want to update us on where we are and anything we need to know in order to move forward?
No, I think it's just, uh, a continuation motion, right?
Okay, could I have that?
So moved.
Are we continuing this to May second?
That's what they want to do.
Okay. Motion to continue the public hearing until May second.
So moved, Joe.
Thanks, Joe, second. Thank you, Edna. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hosts, extensions. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Howard and Mark. Uh, I think this was nice tonight. Thanks a lot.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you.
Uh, next up, Thomas Daniels, Eight Slate Dock Road, improvements to the property site plan and special use permit. I see Mr. Murray here.
Yes, I am. Good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
I'm proud to say that I told Mr. Daniels, I said, we're late on the list, maybe around eight o'clock. And I have that in writing, so that was pretty good guessing. Um, but I've changed my mind. I'd like to add a miniature train to our site plan. A little smaller, maybe.
All right, I'll take a motion. I'll take a motion right now.
We want that guy from Newark, though.
Thank you very much, um, to the planning board and the TAB. And actually, they're not represented here, but the Z, ZBA also. It's been, it's been an active laugh for six weeks. Um, the town, um, has responded, the town engineer has responded to my clients with. Um, and, and to us as applicants with questions about Eight Slate Dock Road. It's a special small property, um, bordering, really sitting on the river essentially. Uh, with a steep existing driveway and a tired old house. And two neighbors who we're trying very much to be considerate of as we plan. And, and take advice and constructive criticism from a number of different sources. So, um, I'd love to report to you on, uh, the site visits. Our reaction and changes to, to combined advice from both planning board. And, um, ZBA and, and hope that you'll find favor and, um. With, with our efforts and our, our, uh, the owner's desire to build a house with a detached garage. Um, first I should just go back and summarize, we're looking for. Now, I'm reading, I'm not gonna ask you to pull them up, Jim, but I'll just read right from my application. We're looking for three variances on this property. The first variance is, uh, for the main house. Uh, the Rhine Cliff overlay district restricts the size of the house to twenty three hundred square feet as of right. We would like a house that is twenty five twelve, so it's nine percent larger than that. Permitted by, as of right. The second, um, two variances are for the garage. The first one in some ways is straightforward. We want to put the garage in the front yard. Um, for this particular property with its road frontage. The, I would say, uh, and I think everyone has heard this a number of times now, there's no other place to put a garage. Um, and then secondly, or second variance or third altogether, is the variance for the height of the garage. And, um, thank you, Jim, for bringing this up. Maybe even the second rendering would be better. I think I labeled, I labeled it there as well. Um, the garage is, um, by definition, twenty three feet, eight inches tall. Which is seventeen and a half percent higher than, than the twenty, twenty feet permitted. Um, I would let you know, though, one of the reasons it's twenty three foot eight is that we moved it to the south. And back toward the setback in order to move it out of the way of the neighbor at Four Slate Dock Road. Um, so as a consequence, the garage floor is actually four feet above the natural grade at the back of the garage. We did not and do not propose to change the grade back there to make the building shorter. Uh, instead, the desire is to, is to plant. And, um, during the, let me look at my notes, the planning board visit, um, on March twenty third. It was suggested to us that, um, one, we do plant and, and we show it, we show a landscaping plan. Um, we in fact, um, I won't say volunteered, said, yes, we can do that. I couldn't have it done. Um, the submission for this meeting was prior to that. So of course, you're not looking at it today. But we're still willing to do that if the planning board thinks it's necessary. Um, but I would say, and the owner is here, uh, Tom is here, Tom Daniels is here tonight. I think it's fully their intention to plant along the property line for the benefit of both. Four Slate Dock and Eight Slate Dock to maintain their, their, their privacy from each other. Um, so those are the three variances. Uh, just to speak to the efforts made. Um, the garage has actually gone through, and I'm gonna read just a short description. That went into my revised zoning board of appeals application. Uh, the design and positioning of the garage structure has gone through various iterations to accommodate the neighboring property at Four Slate Dock Road. Initially, the garage was reduced in width from twenty five feet to twenty two feet. And moved south to minimize the impact to the western views of Four Slate Dock. Uh, based on the, on the ZBA site visit and, and the meeting with neighbors, the barons, thank you for inviting us to your rear deck. And to your property, uh, to talk and to, and to, um, and to look at the, let me say, the stakeout and the mockup and talk about the height. Uh, we made, um, and really Scott from the planning board or from the zoning board. Um, along with another zoning board member, made some, made some pretty simple suggestions slash urged us to make changes. And I said, look, I only have twenty four hours to get my planning board package in. And they said, great, you should leave now and get started. Um, as a result of that, we did a number of things. We took the exterior stair off and moved it inside the garage. So that instead of it being a twenty two feet wide garage with a stair on the side, the stairs moved inside. Two, we reduced, because we moved the stair inside, I, I no longer need to go up a stair. And, and have a certain height to open a door through the side of the building. So I was able to reduce the height of the garage. From, from twenty four foot six to twenty three foot, uh. Twenty four foot eight, it should say, to twenty three foot eight. Um, so now the height of the building I have is a little over seventeen percent over that permitted by zoning. And three, we moved the building another foot south. And, and four, we committed to adjusting or moving the garage even further. If, if it's still functional, like at some point, it's too close to the house and you can't move a car around. Um, it was, it was kind of difficult to just do it and pretend it was good. But I think we, we have done quite a bit and we, um, we hope the neighbors appreciate it. We think the people on site that day did understand our sincerity and. And, and I would say, based on a few people's comment, it wasn't, didn't seem to be so much the height of the garage. As it was just the presence of the garage. If you could maybe go to the first rendering, Jim. This rendering is actually taken from the second floor bathroom window looking west. But it, but it actually still doesn't speak to, um, you know, we could do a million renderings. If you go down another level to the back porch or to the deck of the pool even. Um, the height of the garage doesn't matter. It's just the presence of the garage. So our moving it south. And, and allowing the view on both sides of the large maple. Really, that, that was our effort to try and give back as much as we could. Um, I think we also included, we, we don't need to see it as a group, but it was submitted as part of the package. We, we show what we call the direct view from the, um, rear yard of Four Slate Dock. And then what we called an obtuse view. And we tried to show the percentage of. Um, it would, it would actually have been in a document just prior to that, Jim.
You sent me a lot of documents, Robert. I'll see if I can find.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't try, it wasn't my intention to overwhelm you. Maybe it's thirteen A. And, and while you're looking for it, I wanted to tell the, the board. So we received the town engineer's, um, report. It was based on some old data, so some of the things we had addressed already. But we did, in fact, address and and comment on every single item and produced, for instance, a steep slope plan, which it would be interesting to see the steep. That's this is the obtuse view. So we're obtuse, meaning you come out your back door, but you don't look straight out. You turn, as you would naturally, I think in this case, and look west toward the Eight Slate Dock Road property. The more the more dominant clear view for Four Slate Dock is what we refer to as the primary view, and it does have a unobstructed commanding view of looking looking north and west or west and northwest to over the driveway of Four Slate Dock. And we've we've stayed clear of that from the beginning, many months ago with the Planning Board. I think we we let you know and the neighbors know that we would not put the garage to the north of the maple tree. It was too far away to be useful and it and it blocked what we considered to be a primary view. What did I want to note? There's there's one other, just to just to share with you the complexity of the site. We we developed in response to the town engineer, a plan called a steep slope plan. So Jim, it's labeled as number seven in your in your packet. By the way, thank you. Many of you have opted for electronic. I applaud you and it's wonderful. I know this is a lot of documentation. But I've enjoyed supplying it electronically and trying to number them so they're in an order. So the steep slope plan, you can see that the only areas that are not steep are the driveway, even though I think those of you have been there would say it's a steep driveway. The driveway exceeds 6% slopes in some places, but but not the 15% that basically is is not frowned upon but prohibited. I think the town likes to see driveways less than 15%, and if it's more than 6%, there's a recommendation that it be paved, I think. In this case, it's an existing driveway. It's one that requires more maintenance than your flat driveway, if you have one. But but the driveway, I could show you the the site plan, but this speaks well to steep slopes. There's just no reasonable way to go there or to develop. So the driveway up to the existing house is really, you know, for for a, what's my number, for 1.36 acre lot, I would suggest that that less than boy, less than 3/4 of an acre are truly developable, and that includes the driveway itself. So we've tried very hard to put, and actually, the owners, the owners really like putting the new house, the replacement house in this in the same place roughly as the one that's there. Part of it is born of just the the difficulty of the site and the really wonderful spot that that the existing one was originally cited. So I might ask you, where where might you like me to go with presentation or comments or questions?
Well, next I'm going to ask Craig, who was on the site visit, to report his thoughts.
Okay. Well, I I concur with what Robert has pointed out as far as the, you know, the options of buildability. It seems to be just, you know, a small small subset of options for placement for this, just given the topography. It it's it's somewhat of an ambitious proposal for, you know, such a such a small site. And I think that there's an important context to the the balance of Rhine Cliff and the context in which this site finds itself. And and also, you know, I I would encourage the applicant to, you know, appreciate the 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 natural beauty of the site and 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 what's already there and and try to make abundant use of that rather than trying to just completely remake remake everything. But it it's you know, I appreciate the efforts that have been made to this point as far as keeping views open and giving deference to the neighbors.
Thanks, Craig. Michael, you were also on the site visit. Are there any comments you'd like to make?
Okay. I think the one comment I'd like to make, and this is purely an aesthetic comment. There's that unique knoll of rock that the existing house sits on right now, and it adds a certain character to the property. And I think it would have been nice, I realize, perhaps for the size of the property, they can't do this. But if they could have somehow incorporated that into the design of the house, you know, preserve it, incorporate into the design of the house, work with that. I think they'd have an extraordinarily unique structure, unique home. I realize the challenges there of trying to build on that site, and perhaps that's not possible. But I think it's unfortunate because it really is a very unique feature there in Rhine Cliff. It really speaks to why there's no septic or sewage system that works in the hamlet of Rhine Cliff because it's all rock and there it is right in front of your face. So but it is a very challenged site. There's no question.
Dress, do you mind if I dress her? Or would you like me to wait, Melody?
I'd like you to wait. Thank you. I'd like Jim to, I I believe you've received, Robert, the comments from the C A B. I I believe today, and I I'd like to make sure that all Planning Board members have also seen that those comments came in. You might not have had a chance to look at them yet, but I think they're well crafted and definitely worth taking a look at. Jim, are there any comments you'd like to make before I turn it back to Robert?
Yeah, I had a number of of technical questions related to the submission. I don't necessarily have to go through the melody. If we want to move on, I can, you know, Robert will get a copy of my memo, assuming that, you know, we're not talking about approval tonight. I don't know if we are, but I do have some issues with with what's been submitted. You know, Robert, the the pages you submitted, and a lot of these sheets are fine. But, you know, we don't have any of the stamp and signature, you know, boxes on them. They don't have your stamp and sign out signature on them, things like that. So, you know, for the engineered sheets, you know, we're going to need the typical information that you did submit, you know, with the first round. There are a number of comments from the C P L that I think you did, you know, you you provided a response to them. The one that I still don't think has been addressed is the driveway, which you did mention. The driveway exceeds 6% grade, and the code specifically states that that's supposed to be paved with blacktop or oil and stone in order to prevent erosion sediment control unless a professional engineer through a detailed drainage erosion study plan states the sedimentation will not occur. I don't believe I saw a detailed plan that would permit this to move forward without that being improved. So we have to meet that section of the code. Either it needs to be paved some way or we need that detailed report. There are a couple of things, you know, I think paperwork still just needs to be updated with appropriate numbers, but we can deal with that kind of offline. That's that's a technical thing. You know, my other comment is just to make sure that the Planning Board is comfortable with, you know, the 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 questions from the engineer, C P L, you know, have been adequately addressed because there were a number of them. I know Robert responded to those, but I want to make sure the Planning Board is comfortable with them because there were there were a number that they addressed.
Okay. Robert, I'll go back to you now.
Thank you. I would, I I would say, I should say, the C A B comment was great, and please read it, and I hope you support us and me. But I would say, I don't know, I think it was a little rough. For instance, one of the comments was that this development is is aggressive and maybe maybe I I only received it. I have to pull it up in my email. I just received it today. But there was something about the view from the river and and not, they didn't say offensive, but toward conclusion, maybe second paragraph and conclusion. Okay. Well, there are two things they address here. Maybe, Michael, your your comment is born of your review of the C A B. On the paragraph shown that begins, the new greatly increased in size replates replacement. You know, I think even if the footprint was double, I don't know that that constitute constitutes greatly. I talked about the area of the building being 9% more than that allowed. So I feel like that's a little rough. That's a little rough for C A B to go there. Secondly, he talks about the rocks, the the top of the block will be obliterated and never be restored. You know, we want to build a house. And and actually, I would tell you, I responded to the town engineer by producing a rock demolition plan and even calculated even calculated the the spoils that might be removed. And I actually think I'm aggressive about my calculations. I think the Daniels will discover that they'll only remove a portion of the rock, and they will, in fact, leave some exposed and dropping away from their house to the west. So I think the word obliterated is unnecessary and not accurate. But I I thought maybe the Daniels would like to put earth down to grow grass. But but I I kind of think it's a it's a beautiful spot, and they enjoy its rocky outcroppings and things now. But like many houses done, you know, in the last century, if you walked into the basement of the existing cottage that's there, you immediately encounter boulders and things that weren't possible to remove decades ago or were it was impractical and overly expensive. So what did they do? They built right on top of it, and they didn't use the basement. Like, if you go in the basement, you find the water supply and the electric and some cobwebs, and it's damp and nasty because when it rains, the water comes down on the rock into the basement. So I don't think it's their intention to to obliterate rock and to and to demolish the site. They love what it is and where it is, and I think they're going to enjoy preserving some of what they can as they go to.
Okay.
Excavate. Could I just say one thing? I, Robert, I don't want to blame the C A B. I haven't really haven't read their review yet. I, by the time it got in, I was already haven't seen it. No, you have to blame me for my comments. It's entirely on me.
Okay, no blame. No blame.
Well, I mean, you're, Jim is showing it. I know it only came in to me today, and it came to the town maybe Friday. But I but I would encourage, I I expect everyone should see it, including the public. One other note there was talked about modernist materials and the inappropriate nature, but in fact, it's wood siding, not unlike probably what's on most of your houses. And if I look around the neighborhood, I see vinyl and aluminum. So I feel like stained wood siding is is probably more period acceptable than vinyl siding. Lastly, I just wanted to address the driveway. We're not, it's not a new driveway. It's been there for decades. And and I think the, I would say, I didn't want to commit the owner to the Planning Board or any other entity in the town to redo a driveway that has enjoyed use and occupancy of the property for decades. I think the owner might, in fact, enjoy paving it, but I didn't want to make it an obligation for for him unnecessarily. If the Planning Board or maybe Jim, you could speak to that.
Well, Robert, the the reason we're talking about this is you're in before the Planning Board for site plan and special use permit. And when you're in for site plan and special use permit, we have to go back and look at the code and see what the code requires for the purposes of of what you're in front of the board for. And that is one of the requirements. You either need you need to meet the code. So it's either got to be paved with oil and stone. You need to give us a report or potentially go to the Z B A and ask for variance. It's just, it is what is. It's in the code. So I, you know, I I raised it and and our engineer raised it as well. So it just, you know, it needs to be addressed within the, you know, the
Even though we're not changing that driveway, you you'd like.
You're you're updating the site. It's a site plan and special use permit. When you come in for those types of permits, the board is is really tasked with looking at the site, you know, whether it's the 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 impact you're having, where the building's going or or the access to it or whatever it may be, the trees coming down, the whole site is is up for review.
And I respect that I'm only trying to protect my client and not to say, yes, 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 whatever you guys want.
We will gladly pave the driveway. We just didn't want to kind of create more act. So if it's something that we can do as part of this, we'll do that.
Well, you had, I think Jim's explained there are some options available to you. And we don't need to have you resolve the selection of which option you want to pursue tonight. I just, Jim is pointing out that you it needs to be addressed. I know you're still before the zoning board of appeals, so we'll be continuing the public hearing tonight, and that gives you time to talk to yourselves about how you want to work that out. I'd like to ask if there are any other Planning Board members who have comments or questions at this time.
Melody, I just have one. Is it is it common that the C A B reports have subjective language in them?
Yes.
Okay.
You know, they're looking at it from their perspective. I, it is, it is a report to us. It's not binding to us. They're making recommendations and and reporting on what they see. So it is up to you to read it and to evaluate it based on your own observations of the property or your own thoughts about the application.
But it is subjective, correct?
Subjective from their perspective, yeah.
I think appropriately so. It's a tough job, but they they, and I think the Planning Board, if I could say, is is depends on them for an opinion so they can decide what's reasonable and rational. I'm only a little disappointed that we got our C A B visit last August 11. And I know that there was a shakeup in most of the, I think they're all gone, maybe those board members. But it's the timing is is difficult to awkward. We've done a hell of a lot of work as directed and requested between last August and now. So it's, we'll we'll address it. We, if anyone has any advice for us directly, we're happy to hear it offline.
No, thank you.
I have a, just a comment. I I obviously read the report and was taking in the recommendations about the the outcroppings, which I agree are extremely beautiful. So I worked with the sellers before the Daniels purchased the house. And I just thought I would point out that it was a really difficult house to sell, in part because there was extreme amounts of moisture coming in the basement from the outcroppings. And the house, both in its current condition and the size, did not work for most people, most families. So while the land is certainly something that we want to appreciate and work within, our properties need to be functional for the people that live there, and this house was not, over and over again, from buyers. So I just thought I would point out what the existing structure, you know, the limitations of it were.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone here from the public who wishes to comment? If not, I would entertain a motion to continue the public hearing to May 2, Gretchen?
Yes.
Okay, could I have that motion?
So moved, Melody.
Thank you, Edna. Second. Second, please. All those in favor?
I.
Opposed, abstentions? Thank you very much.
I appreciate you all.
Thank you. Enjoy the rest of the evening. What's left?
Thank you.
That brings us to the last public hearing of the evening. That is Red Wing, 286 White White School House Road Mining Scale and Scale House driveway site plan and special use permit. Okay. Who is here this evening?
I'm Melody. This is Ryan Keller. Her, Bon, Shannick and King were the attorneys for Red Wing. I do not believe Paul Griggs is on today, though. And my client, I think, Frank Dord is on as well.
Okay, is there, are there comments or a presentation you wish to make tonight, Ryan?
Well, because Paul Griggs is here, we do not have any substantive additions to what we've already presented over the last few months. The one comment that I do have is, I know the workshop has been mentioned a few different times. I don't believe that's been scheduled, and my client is interested in doing that. My client did reach out, I believe, to Gretchen right after our last meeting to see how we can get that scheduled, and we haven't heard back yet on that. So I guess my one main priority of attending tonight was to see if we can get that workshop scheduled so we can work with all you folks in order to move this along.
Okay. Jim, I'll turn it over to you at this point for comments.
Okay, I I have a couple, and I think mainly I was just kind of pointing the putting these out there. You all have this in the memo, and and Ryan, you'll get a copy of it, you know, from Gretchen after the meeting. We'll send it to you next year, too. Again, as we've done with every meeting, I want to reiterate that it's important that everyone knows the town does not have control over the mining permit itself. That control rests with the state of New York, and the applicant has received approval to pour to mine a portion of the site. What the Planning Board is looking at are issues that are detailed in the zoning code, section 12568 F F, and that is what we have to work within and what we're doing as part of the review here. With that, you know, I've done, you know, some more work on this. There's a lot of material that was With that, you know, I've done, you know, some more work on this. There's a lot of material that was submitted. There's there's a lot going on. And one of the issues that that's now come up is that an adjacent mine is actually currently before the planning board for a reapproval of their existing mining permit. And one of the discussions that we had now that is before us is that one of the biggest discussions we've heard, and I think the planning board is is, you know, it's heard from the neighbors and discussed is is traffic and what will happen with the trucks coming in and out. I believe, and I've talked with some others, including, you know, based on what I've reviewed from the county planning department letter, that given that the Red Wing mine is before us and the the adjacent mine is before us, that the planning board should consider and or request that C P L, the town plant, the town engineer, take a look at this traffic study and any other traffic studies that we do. And essentially provide the planning board with a cumulative traffic impact assessment. So you understand not only what's going on on this site, but what's going on next door. There's a lot going on in this area. The county did a safety study at the intersection White Schoolhouse Road and Slate Quarry. We do have the traffic study from this. We have the other effort going on. So that's one element that I did want to mention that I think the planning board should consider and request. What else? So so the county has been contacted. I don't know if we've talked with D O T about anything related to traffic on the other end of the of White Schoolhouse Roads. We'll check into that. And then the the big issue that, you know, I did put out there in my memo for the planning board to consider, and this comes right back to the zoning code itself, is that there have been a lot of approval resolutions in the past related to mining operations in the town. They cover a lot of years. They they cover, you know, new operations, renewals, things like that. And I think I characterize that there are generally consistent set of approval requirements that have come about through pretty much all of those resolutions in the past. And there are certainly some unique ones. I kind of laid them all out. I think there are probably 12 or 13 of them. I do think a number of these will be the elements that we'll be looking at as we move forward and determining if, you know, we use this as a basis for moving forward or if anything needs to change a little bit. But generally speaking, they they follow exactly what's in the code. You know, the applicant should comply with the New York State D E C permit. It imposes hours of operation. Diligent efforts to reclaim the land. We talk about truck size, the I'm sorry, the resolutions, talk about truck size, what trucks are, you know, can access the sites, consideration of the neighborhood and other details, you know, kind of as they come out of the code. So I encourage you, you know, in addition to having read the the code, hopefully by now to take a look at, you know, what I pulled out of those those prior resolutions, you know, that we that were pulled so that you can understand what's been discussed in the past. And Melody, with that, I think that kind of summarizes, you know, my thoughts at the moment. I think, you know, we have some more discussion to do on certainly the traffic side of things.
I just want to clarify, Michael, are you recused from this process?
Yes, I will be speaking as a private citizen.
All right, let the record report that Michael has recused himself. Jim, in regards to your suggestion involving C P L with a coordinated traffic evaluation study, would we want that in the form of a motion tonight?
I I think so. And then obviously we'll want to talk with the applicant about applicants, you know, about willingness to do that and coordinating that effort. Because that would obviously come with, you know, that additional cost. But I do I do think it's important that we look at the cumulative impact and consider that.
I make it, may I make a suggestion?
Yes, John.
That I I can talk to Jim about this, but I I think that we have to take a look at, you know, the the getting seeker started is the one of the board's first tasks before them here. And I guess I I I think what Jim's suggesting is excellent, but I'm thinking about timing and whether it's more appropriate for us to be looking at the substance after the board has done its work on making a determination of significance because if, you know, it's it's a negative declaration, then, you know, maybe the board can go along the path that Jim's describing, or if it's a positive declaration, that may, you know, those traffic impacts may be part and parcel of, you know, of an environmental study that would be done pursuant to a pause deck. So timing wise, you know, we may want to see where the board's going with regard to seeker.
Okay. And John, we did at the beginning of the meeting share with our colleagues our plans for the next meeting and the May meeting in terms of reviewing the secret process and and having going through the part twos. So they're 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 all on, they're all on board with that. Okay.
It's probably worth just announcing that again, since we are at the point of discussing Red Wing case, some people weren't on. And I could just do it really quickly. And that is that if if that's okay.
Absolutely.
And that is at the at the April 18 meeting, which may or may not be in person, depending on where we are with the governor's orders by then. But we will have a, we're going to do a seeker overview presentation of the part two, probably 30 to 45 minutes or so. John, I believe will be leading that as it relates specifically to the Red Wing project and grassmere. Those are both seeker part two application paperwork elements that we need to work on in the near term. So we'll do that on April 18, start that overview process and discuss what the part two is and how that relates to to this project and the other one. And then on May 2, at the beginning of our meeting, we are actually planning to spend the time to go through the part two for both Red Wing and grassmere, doing both at the same time, because they're both kind of at the same point in the process for the secret process. So I just want to put those dates out there for everyone. So you're aware of those. Thanks, Melody.
Okay. Ryan, you okay? Okay, then I'll ask planning board members if they wish to make comments now or ask questions. And if not, we'll open it up to the public for comments. Okay, I don't see any hands waving at me. So Jim, I'll turn it back to you to admit the public for comment.
If anyone has a comment, please raise your hand and we'll get to you in the order. I see hands raised. Look at the first one is Michael.
Yeah, thank you. I have two points, I think, I'd like to raise. I've sent you written materials on these, so I'm not going to read what I've, you know, because I just two things I want to go over quickly. One is the status of the incidental cake permit, which D E C issued to Red Wing to allow them to go through the turtle habitat to access White Schoolhouse Road. One of the conditions of granting that I T P and it's right in the I T P is that Red Wing has to have an agreement with a land trust of some sort to protect what D E C thought were about a 74 acre area within the habitat of the of the Blandings turtles to oversee, monitor and ensure that the Blandings turtle mitigation plan, D E C said, had to be put into place to allow Red Wing to go through the habitat will indeed happen. The implementation of that conservation easement with the wetland trust has not taken place. It was agreed that the 74 plus acres, whatever it is, would be transferred to the wetland trust. They would then be on a fee simple. They would be in a position to monitor and to manage the site for the benefit of the turtles. That has not taken place. Obviously, members of the planning board, you know, it hasn't taken place because in order to transfer that land, first, it has to be subdivided out of Red Wing's property. So the title exists to be transferred. So a major condition of granting that I T P by D E C has not been met. And I believe it's a significant one. And I believe D E C has to rescind that I T P until this issue can be resolved. It's a bit of a mess right now. I think that's characterized by the fact that when Red Wing filed the conservation easement with the Duchess County Clerk's office, D E C requires and the county requires that the meets and bounds of the conservation area be clearly delineated in the filing. In what Red Wing filed, it was the meets and bounds of their 231 acre property, which I guess one could then say they're not allowed to do any mining on that property according to conservation easement they file. But clearly, this has to be cleared up before the planning board can proceed. The second issue I have is that D E C extended the life of mine from the mine down to White Schoolhouse Road. The appellate division decision permits Red Wing to apply for mining permits from D E C for 94 acres, not for the 231 acres. And the majority of this road passes through areas that was not part of that decision, which therefore is strictly under the regulatory authority of the town of Rhinebeck. Therefore, I believe D E C has to rescind that extension of the mine from that land, which is not within the 94 acres. And then it falls to us, to you, to actually go forward and do the necessary study work to see whether you agree that there will be a net conservation benefit to the turtles if that road runs through there. And the conditions of the Blandings turtle management plan that D E C thinks will make net conservation benefit for the turtles is real. These are two significant issues that I believe need to be resolved before the planning board can go any further in dealing with this application. They really condition what's out there right now on the property as to what your abilities are, what your options are. And I think that before any further action to be taken on this, and I think this is something for John and Kim to look into, these two issues have to be clearly resolved. And I think certainly the one about who is responsible, who has legal authority over the land there to determine what can and can't go there. It's clearly in the town. Case law has shown that towns can say no mining on property. Red Wing can apply for a mining permit to D E C for 94 acres, not for 231. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. I see Melissa.
Yes, that's me. Hi, hi, I'm Melissa and Theodore Braggins.
Okay.
And just let me get up to speed here. Hi, thank you.
You've identified yourself. Can you give us your?
Theodore Braggins at eight Ballen Becker Road, town of Rhinebeck.
Thank you.
And while I am not directly adjacent to the property on White Schoolhouse or Slate Quarry, I do live on Ballen Becker and probably as the crow flies are very close, probably within a half mile or closer to the mining site. What I wanted to speak to quickly was the issue of noise mitigation and having been lived through a number of sort of years where mining was occurring. It wasn't that it was loud decibel noises at incremental mitten times. What was troubling was the constant noise and that some days it would be seven in the morning to late in the evening. And it's not unlike having a neighbor that is continually mowing or having their chainsaw running or something. While it was off in the distance, it was audible. It was loud. And then finally, in the evening or late afternoon, depending on the season, the noise would stop and it would be all of a sudden, oh, phew, that noise has just dissipated. So I would like to speak to that issue as as that's something that is important to understand. The other issue is one of recreation. White Schoolhouse, Pels Road, all these places are used for walkers and bicyclers. And the impact from trucks going in and out is something that is of great concern. My late father, Horace J. Braggins, was on the Conservation Advisory Council for a number of years. And in the last iteration, he had written a letter and submitted to the board on this on the use of of the mining for property for mining there. And he was opposed to that. So I just wanted to put that into the record also. And so those are my concerns. I'm very concerned really in general about how this impacts the greater area and the trucks White Schoolhouse, Slate Quarry, and actually going east the other direction that it will be really not beneficial to the residents in the area or the town of Rhinebeck in general. So that's all I have. Thank you for listening. I appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I I believe we have a switch in trembles. It looks like perhaps this is Paula wishing to speak.
Yes, thank you, Melody. Paula Trimble, Slate Quarry Road. I wanted to talk about some topics that I I'm concerned about and that I hope that you'll discuss at the workshop. I'm going to send my comments to you. So I'm just going to give you a brief view of the top headings that I have here. I feel the town experts need to do an in-depth habitat study. There's been a big change in activity over the past 15 years at this mine site. And the absence of mining over pretty much the last decade has resulted in an increased opportunity, excuse me, for animals and plants to use this area. The second thing is that the town's experts need to examine whether this sub aqua is mine will be a threat to our groundwater and evaluate potential impacts of mining into the groundwater on the local hydrogeologic system. If the planning board gives Red Wing a, this will be the first time there will be sub aqua is mining at such a large scale over the recharge area of the aquifer providing water to the eastern side of Rhinebeck. Groundwater from our wells and springs is our only source of household water. We therefore need to make sure our water is protected from the start. Once the groundwater is affected, it will be too late. We need protection, not mitigation. Another topic is the town's expert need to do a safety study on White Schoolhouse Road and its intersections. It is important that the planning board have an objective safety assessment of the town road and its intersections, particularly the intersection with 308 and Slate Quarry Road. Then I had a few questions that I had been thinking about. Has the applicant exhausted alternatives to using White Schoolhouse Road to access the mine? They followed the D E C application process. And that means the applicant and D E C agreed on the Hall Road with the access point on White Schoolhouse Road without consulting the town regarding the appropriateness of increasing heavy vehicle traffic onto White Schoolhouse Road. Another question is, will the planning board specify hours of operation to help mitigate the neighbors' concerns? Another question, how will the planning board ensure conditions they place on approving the application will be followed? Rhinebeck has traditionally relied on the permities to ensure the historic limits have been met. But members of our neighbors group have expressed concerns that the wheel and cubic yard limits have sometimes been ignored. And finally, can the planning board ensure the easement will provide the protection that it is supposed to? Thank you to the planning board for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Paula. Yvette.
That, hi, I'm Yvette Michelle. I live on White Schoolhouse Road. And I just wanted to reiterate that I am a dog walker on the street. I'm a cyclist. I am a jogger. And even with hours of operations, it's still going to be very unsafe during the time that people actually jog, cycle or walk their dogs. And the noise level, I'm very concerned. I moved here from the city and I love the quietness of White Schoolhouse Road. And I think that'll be majorly disrupted. And that's it.
Thank you, Yvette. Is there anyone else? Okay, I for the record, would like to note that. Yeah.
One more hand up.
Okay, one more hand.
Two more.
Two more hands.
Michael or Paul, I think you were first.
Um, excuse me. Steve and Patty Lebowski asked me to read their comments into the record for them since they are not at a a place right now that has adequate internet access.
Okay.
To the planning board, over the last few months, we have written numerous letters expressing our concern with the Red Wing mine. If you read these letters, you know the following facts. One letter had links to numerous medical research papers, and they state dust from the mine and dust from the trucks will cause severe health issues, asthma, C O P D and lung cancer. We also stated that my health asthma has already been compromised from living near the Decker mine. Another link states that the noise from the trucks will shorten our lives. Cardiovascular disease and strokes have been proven to increase with the constant noise. As to the volume of trucks, we have quotes from Red Wing made from past meetings that prove their narrative of 20 to 25 trucks a day to be false. They have said, we have supplied Yankee Stadium and Yale University. We will be a regional mine. We are the largest supplier of. We are the largest supplier of sand and gravel in Duchess County, and we employ over fifty people and serve twenty-five municipalities. Does this sound like twenty trucks per day to you? We know that the road itself is too narrow to accommodate these trucks. We know it's not safe. We also know that all of the people who live on White Schoolhouse Road, Hilltop Road, Cedar Lane. And Jardel Court travel north to access the village of Rhinebeck, all seventy-five homes. We gave you statements from both Janice Potter and Bill Jeffway. Miss Potter said that she had to sell her home in Elizabel because of the dust. Filth and noise made life in her home of fifteen years untenable. Mister Jeffway stated that because of the danger and noise from the trucks, they had to get the county and state D O T involved. Because Red Wing seemed unconcerned about correcting issues. Remember, this all happened on county roads, not smaller town roads. The planning board has visited the Red Wing site, but they have have they spent time visiting White Schoolhouse Road itself. Sit on our porch and have some town of Rhinebeck dump trucks drive in both directions. Do the same at the Slate Quarry Road, White Schoolhouse Road intersection. You will see a problem. We have stated both the uniqueness and historical significance of our property. The house and barns have been dated to at least seventeen ninety, first dated in seventeen fifty. The family has owned it for a hundred and one years. The property encompass both sides of the road. We are a working farm. I cross the road at least twenty-five to thirty times a day with either a tractor, walking or in a truck. Pulling in and out of our Christmas tree field will be extremely. To the north. We all know that an industrial mine of this capacity does not belong on a town road. Our comprehensive plan does not allow for this as well. We also know from past years, there is no enforcement of town ordinances. Tri axles are not allowed, and yet we see them. The New York State D E C has dropped the ball on the entire situation. It is a complete environmental disaster. They have completely ignored. All of their own laws pertaining to wetlands, groundwater, endangered species, et cetera. Blandings turtles, bird nesting, kettle bush pools, damage to the aquifer and the related springs that feed the landsman kill. Our town is unique. People come from all over because of its beauty and rural character, allowing an industrial mine will destroy this. In closing, we hope that the board realizes the gravity of their decision should they allow the sub to go forward. For the good people of White Schoolhouse Road, Rhinebeck residents and the related tourism industry, this will be a life altering event. White Schoolhouse Road will be changed forever. And it says, thank you, Stephen Patty Lebowski.
Thank you. Reverend Bowen. You're muted.
Can't hear you.
Can't hear.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Sarah Bowen. I live at two nineteen Slate Quarry Road on the corner of White Schoolhouse. I spoke last time. I just wanted to provide a short update about the safety concerns that I have. Here at this corner, we had four accidents since our last meeting, two of which caused property damage at our home. So I would just like to attest again to this, to the safety issues that we are seeing right here at the corner already without an increase of trucks. Thank you.
Thank you. Cornelia.
Hi, Cornelia Gallo, three forty Ackard Hook Road. I have Lynn Lebowski. Fourteen Hill, sixteen Hilltop Road, Ken McPhail, sixty-six Arnett Road, the village of Rhinebeck. Lynn lives on Hilltop. The traffic, the noise is a concern. Ken commutes, Slate Quarry, the intersection of White Schoolhouse and White School. Slate Quarry and White Schoolhouse cannot sustain ten wheeler trucks going in and out. Ten wheelers. I travel it quite frequently. So I mean, we're concerned both the noise and the traffic. At the public hearing that was last face to face, the developers were saying that it would be twenty to twenty-five trucks a day. That's fifty trucks. That's every nine minutes. So during an eight hour period, it's just not. Sustainable on White Schoolhouse Road. So, thank you.
Okay, I'm just going to remind everybody because I I do feel we're starting to go over. We're starting to make the same comments over and over again, and believe me, they're they've all been received. And they're all being taken seriously, so if you've heard comments about. This before. Let's see if we can move along a little bit. I believe Ryan was next.
Yes, thank you. And in the interest of time, I'm not going to respond on behalf of Red Wing for all of the comments that we've heard today. We will be putting together a submission that responds to to most, if not all of these comments. The one thing I did want to talk about, because I did not bring it up at the last meeting, but Mister Trimble did bring this up now twice. Is the conservation easement, and it's my understanding that Red Wing has filed this conservation easement. And also has an agreement with the wetland trust. Not only that, but this really is a D E C matter. It's not a town matter, so we find that it's quite irrelevant for this proceeding here today. And and again, this will be in our submission that I mentioned earlier, but we we think that Mister Trimble is is quite off base with the ninety-four acres. And the road and the two hundred and forty-one acres that we're not trying to get mining for the whole two hundred and forty-one acres. This road is is certainly for the ninety-four acres and it's within the ninety-four acres. So that'll be further in our submission as well as the workshop that we would like to get scheduled.
We, yes, Ryan, we'll we'll get to that. Kara. Kara Keywell?
Yeah, sorry, I couldn't. I didn't know who was in control of the video. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I just wanted to speak on behalf of many of the neighbors. And on Ackard Hook and concerned about the rock ledge development. In support of the concerns of the neighbor neighbors on White Schoolhouse Road, because I think in both both instances. We're talking about a question of scale and appropriateness to the community. And the community envisioned by the comprehensive plan, and I really appreciate the Reverend Sarah Bowen's. Update on the situation at the intersection between White Schoolhouse Road and Slate Quarry Road. To me, that begs the question of whose liability is it when one of the mining trucks collides with. A passenger vehicle and somebody dies. I think we should be really clear on that as as we as we move forward at at a minimum, maybe. A full red stoplight that goes off. A quarter of a mile from the site as trucks approach the intersection or something of that magnitude, but I was just. Absolutely stunned by the number of accidents that already occur there without the the frequency of the of the mining activity proposed here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? I would, I'd like to point out for the record that certainly I I don't bother that. I know all the letters that may have come in, but two that I think are of note is a letter that came from the county. And a letter that came recently from the school driver assigned to that road, so. I believe they've been forwarded to planning board members and and we should know that those public comments have come in as well. Are there members of the planning board who wish to ask questions or make comments at this time?
I have a question. Maybe for Jim and Melody, perhaps, just so that we're clear about what we what we are. Are are, you know, direction here as planning board, when talking about the aquifer, which I know people have mentioned. Are these within the range of of things that we can ask for studies on, or is that outside of our territory? Also like air pollution and the impact on that, like are those within things that we can ask for information on?
Well, I think we have John here, and maybe John would like to respond to that question.
I I think that we have, you know, or the jurisdiction of the board, I I'm not prepared to answer that completely right now. Because. There are some some areas that D E C has looked at. We need to. Pin down, you know, what you're going to have a review here pursuant to the zoning law, and there are certain things under the zoning law that. That can be considered, but there's also a seeker review which can have a wider. Scope than the zoning law review. So it's an excellent question, Delise. I hope to have a better answer for you because I know that's a question lots of people are asking. At the next meeting when we start talking about how the board is going to move forward in the seeker process.
Thank you. Anyone else? If there are no more comments or questions, I think we can ask for a resolution to continue the public hearing. I I would just wanted to ask Ryan one question. Or I would ask Jim and others, are we feeling that we're going to be able to get this workshop done? By the next. Meeting that would be May second, or do we want to continue the public hearing until the June meeting and make sure we get the workshop in?
I think Red Wing is prepared to to get it done before the the next meeting. I know Mister Doherty's on the line. Would you agree with that, Frank, that we can get this done before the next meeting? I mean, obviously, it's up to all of the folks, not just us, but it's our intention and our desire that we would like to to get moving on that if possible.
Yes, we're ready whenever the the board can schedule the the meeting.
I would point out that next week is school's spring break, so I don't know if that impacts people's schedules.
What is the purpose of the workshop meeting that's being discussed?
Well, I know this was something that was mentioned by Jim, I believe, in the very first meeting that we had. And I think it was because there's so many complicated issues and there's so many different concerns that. I I believe it was Jim's idea and we agreed that we thought the a workshop would be good where it's the the planning board as well as Red Wing to sit down. Have further discussions about this and moving forward. That was my understanding. Is Jim still on?
Yep.
Yeah, I'm here. I'm not sure if I raised it, but I think, yeah, I think the idea, John, was to try and and move some of these items along, discuss them in more detail off of the regular agenda. Because we've got, you know, four or five new ones in public hearings pretty much every meeting, and so we're thinking we might be able to dig a little deeper into this for the separate workshop for. You know, an hour or two.
Has that, has that need. Changed at all based on what we hope to do on May second? Or is it, or is the May second discussion duplicative of a workshop?
Well, the what I was envisioning for May second is a meeting that doesn't involve participation from the applicant. It would just be for the the board member, a round table for the board members. There'll be plenty to do with going through. I mean, the environmental, you know, the E A F four two, certainly the applicant and any member of the public's. Welcome to be present. I guess I'm just concerned, you know, with a workshop that it premature for. The planning board to be reaching agreements about where, you know, about this particular application. Because I don't think the board knows enough about it yet.
I was gonna, I was gonna agree with you. I think at least, at the very least, until we sit down and do the part two and have those discussions, I think it might be premature. In my opinion, so we have that those more detailed discussions and get through that.
Yeah, I would tend to agree with that.
Okay, so Ryan, it sounds like what we're going to do is go ahead and continue the public hearing until May second, but not. Not schedule a workshop at this time.
I think the workshop's a good idea, certainly at some point, and I appreciate the applicant's willingness to to sit down and talk with the board. I think there's a a space for some productive discussions on that point. It's just a question of timing.
Okay. Comments? All right, could I have a motion to continue the public hearing until May second?
I'm moved, Elise.
Thank you, all those in favor. Opposed, abstentions, thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. Thank you, planning board members for hanging in for another extensive meeting, so. Unless there's any new business that I don't know about, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Second show, all those in favor. Opposed, abstentions, all of you getting school break coming up, have fun. Enjoy yourselves and we'll see. Okay, thanks, everybody.